Property.
Because you all are across the street now, so you know each other personally.
Yeah, 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 so there shouldn't be any issue with that. This is actually our engineer Scott Collins, so he's, he's, he's making sure that there's not going to be any problem with this list at all, and we're doing all the, we have all the geotechnical people out there like actually mooring down, we check all the soils, content, and all of that, so it'll be very well engineered. So there shouldn't be any impact to adjacent properties. We're not allowed to impact adjacent properties, so.
Right. So Tommy can step in.
But somebody told you that they were going to take your house?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
They told me that. I got another, and that's what I thought, some relatives, but this letter here, I didn't understand at all.
Yeah, these are kind of very.
Yeah, very hard, unfortunately, I don't put enough information.
No, uh-uh.
Sorry.
Make people.
Sorry, they got you all worked up.
You know, looking for another place or something about, so.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, that's crazy, yeah, that's, that's.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it shouldn't be like that.
No, no, I mean, certainly not anything that the housing authority is doing. It's all going to be up in half flat area over the ball fields, or.
See, I'm from Danville, Virginia.
Pretty good to talk about.
Thirty years ago, I don't know what you're talking about, that was my, where my niece is living now. That's where I was born, and that's always been family property.
Okay.
Which house is that?
Is it on the other side of the street, or?
General Government Street.
No, General Government Street is so across the street, and it's facing Langford Avenue, it's on Langford Avenue.
Okay.
And it's the, the. And you could look, when I went and came here, other night, I drove down, hmm, what's the street behind us? That just started from?
Oh.
On Marrows.
On Marrows.
And I could see my house very well, they had started doing something there. I can see my house very well, but it's there.
There's a development, probably, there's another development going on.
Yeah.
That's not this one.
Yeah, that's not this one.
Yeah, so you're probably just getting contacted by the people that are trying to assemble properties over there to get more development from behind, yes, but it's literally separate from the housing authority.
I can't remember.
What is today? All right, twelve. I have to say.
Ah, no.
Amazing.
I agree.
Spot on.
So how's business?
Not bad.
Okay. My next door neighbor, his name is Greg, I'm trying to think of his last name, Greg Tyler, Tyler Tiger. He's a software developer, and he drives a BMW, blue BMW, M seven.
Mm-hmm.
I think he's pretty sharp, really.
I want to be known, because I think he's in, in something related to restaurants as well.
Hmm. Do you read it to us either?
I'm not, I'm not too.
It's not ringing a bell, he probably doesn't know, but I'm looking up on the.
Your pay was happy. Where's our plug?
Security, Greg.
Do you need a?
There's at least one other, uh.
I think I'll be all right.
Company like the restaurant techs based in town, though.
Oh.
He's in, he's in, I think he either owns his own business or.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Planning Commission regular meeting. We almost have a full commission tonight, we're missing Mr. Sully Yates. Congratulate him on the birth of his new son.
Hey.
Super excited, I'm sure he's going to have a Twitter account pretty soon. That'd be great. Um, and we will start tonight's meeting off with, well, not with, I would like to say we have no public hearings tonight. So this is all just a commission action item agenda, but we will have matters to be presented by the public. Uh, and at that time, which will be very soon, uh, you can speak about anything that is on the agenda for the evening, but this, that will be the only time for public comment this evening. Uh, but we'll start off the meeting with the commissioners' reports. So, uh, Mr. Lohondo, would you please begin?
Yes, okay. Um, so I attended a tree commission meeting a week ago tonight. Um, and in that meeting, some of the highlights, uh, first off, uh, just to let the, the public know, uh, the tree commission is, does have two vacancies on its commission, and looking for members who, to represent, um, the low-income neighborhoods. Uh, and so, uh, please, anybody who has any interest in trees, uh, from those neighborhoods, please, uh, apply. Um, for the planting committee, um, they, that committee is looking, uh, to choose a neighborhood next fall for their, um, uh, their, their, their yearly campaign to plant trees, uh, similar to what we did a year ago in Belmont, where we planted twenty to thirty trees there. Um, and, uh, so looking, uh, at the different possibilities around the city, the code development committee, um, uh, noted that the Fontaine Streetscape public process has started, and that actually I'll be representing the tree commission on that, um, uh, Streetscape Committee. The data committee, uh, reviewed twelve different, um, measures that they have developed over the last couple of years for keeping track of tree planting, removals, and replacements all through the city. Uh, we're getting ready to have our third, um, canopy, uh, study done in the fall, and this will be three, uh, studies over a fifteen-year period, uh, with all the other metrics coming in, uh, the committee, uh, tree commission will have a very good understanding of, uh, trees, how many we've lost, um, uh, how many we need to have, um, and, and why are we losing them? Um, and then, uh, lastly, well, not lastly, next to last, uh, we discussed, uh, several recent incidents where our utilities people and also developers are not providing the tree protection that they're required to provide, um, and we're losing trees as a result of it. Uh, so staff from NDS, uh, and Parks and Rec are looking, and, and utilities are looking for how to be sure those tree protections are enforced. Um, and then, uh, lastly, Arbor Day is coming up, mark your calendars, April twenty-sixth. We'll be deciding on where to have that Arbor Day celebration and what tree to celebrate.
Thanks. What tree to celebrate? Is that a change of?
Exactly, we, we pick a wonderful tree to celebrate around Arbor, we, we hold hands and go around it and sing.
I didn't.
Hope it doesn't end up like the Christmas tree.
Okay, um, learn something new every day, thank you so much. Ms. Dow.
Um, good evening, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Ms. Teaton?
Um, I attended on January sixteenth the CTAC Community Engagement down on Water Street, and put some sticky dots on the walls, and I thought it was very well attended, good, good turnout, um, and, uh, seemed to, seemed to be a lot of conversation, so that was, that's all I have to report.
What were the sticky dots in reference to?
You were supposed to pick the, uh, they had different options around the room on the wall, and you, you have, you were given four dots to pick the, uh, project that you thought was most pressing, so I don't remember how the outcome was, I didn't stay for the end, so. But that, that was how they engaged.
Any specific projects you could choose?
You were, you were given four.
I know, but what were the projects?
Oh, my gosh, I can't even.
Okay.
There, there were probably twenty around the room.
But, but transportation projects?
Like the biking, the biking lanes and where they're going to be, the project down on, uh, near UVA, it, so I thought they had a really good turnout.
Oh, good.
A great way to get, everybody got four dots when they walked in the room, so it was great.
Great, thank you. Mr. Selsonberg?
Yep, um, all right, so, uh, I guess the day after that, uh, you're not going to get dates out of me, sorry, uh, went to the MPO tech meeting, uh, where we reviewed Vtrans's new, uh, funding formula, they're kind of in the early stages of putting the process together for the next smart scale round, um, we got the long-range transportation plan again, which I think will be coming back to us one more time, um, and that's Niren's conclusion narrowing down the list of possible, um, uh, transportation projects, uh, like Gary mentioned, um, hope you voted for bus rapid transit, um, and the bike and pedestrian plan, uh, which, uh, continuing on down the pipeline there, uh, then we had a, a meeting of the place advisory committee, uh, where we discussed, uh, we had a, uh, the deputy chief of the Charlottesville Fire Department join us, um, and we discussed, uh, the length of municipal trucks, um, and buses, uh, less relevant to CFD, um, as it pertains to street safety, um, and both, uh, in terms of, uh, safety while driving those trucks and blind spots, um, and, uh, overall in terms of how it makes streets work for, uh, the pedestrian and bicycle environment. Um, and we also discussed, uh, the rezoning in Minneapolis to legalize duplexes and triplexes in all zones.
Minneapolis, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things, um, a couple of weeks ago, Bill and I, um, were participated in the Fontaine Streetscape, um, project, and that was just giving the consultants an opportunity to walk us through, you know, what the vision for the project is, and then giving the neighbors a chance to take a little survey, to talk about the things that they'd like to see in the Streetscape, and we too got to do the sticky dots, um, the outcome of the, um, of the survey and the sticky dots will be available on the twenty-eighth, when we meet again at, uh, NDS. So, um, Jody, I guess you'll probably be there, since you're now on our team, welcome.
Thank you.
The other meeting was with, uh, Parks and Rec, the, um, the Parks and Rec group, they, um, per capita, they probably are the most active, um, uh, Parks and Rec organization in the state, um, we, we've just got a lot going on. Won't bother you with all of it, but I'll talk to you about the thing that, again, has me the most geeked out, and that's the skate park. We, um, had a new skate park manager on board. The gentleman's name is Matt Moffett, and he is actually a, used to be a professional skateboarder, and he has managed skate parks throughout the union, and I think the last skate park he managed was in San Diego, so he knows a lot about skate parks. And we, uh, remain quite geeked about this, because we do think this is going to be a major economic driver, um, in, in Charlottesville. The, uh, grand opening continues to iterate, and I think now we're looking at April, uh, grand opening in April now, so.
Thank you. And do we have a university report?
Not at this time.
Not at?
Thanks.
Okay, so, um, I'll start first by the TJPDC, I attended a TJPDC meeting last Thursday, um, we did not get to do sticky dots, so I'm going to have to get on them and figure out what was the problem there, uh, but we did have a conversation about, um, statewide broadband initiatives, as you all know, the, uh, legislation is in session, and so the crossover day was last week, where, uh, those initiatives are being heard, and I'm sure we'll hear more about those if it is signed and passed on to law. Uh, we also had a, a very large, uh, discussion about the regional bicycle pedestrian plan, uh, and that was a pretty intensive plan, so this is not just about, uh, it takes into account the Charlottesville bike pad plan, but it kind of expands it regionally, and, um, the discussions that were had is how this expands, really mostly, uh, takes our plan, our city, uh, and goes even further out into the county, but then, what, the TJPDC is, uh, Flavana, Louisa, Nelson, and Green, uh, and so that part of the plan is more rural bike and, and how to do that, but I think the bulk of the plan would be, uh, is going to be really, uh, something good for, uh, the urban core ring of the county and the city, so I was pretty excited about that. Uh, we did not vote on it that night, um, I suggested, one of the things that we fail the most on, on these plans is adding an education component, we do a lot about, uh, putting in roads and sidewalks, but we don't do a, a great education component with bicyclers or people who drive about the rules of, of the road, and so, uh, hopefully, they're going to come back with something on that, and we will vote on that in March. Um, there was a financial report, uh, and, um, then some discussion about the regional housing study update, that is coming along, and I'm hoping we're going to see something about that pretty soon, right now, I think the regional housing, um, commission is working on, uh, uh, getting established with the executive committee, they did a, um, uh, nominated an executive committee for this, and now they're putting together bylaws and things, uh, but I do think that the work on the housing study is already underway, so we look forward to seeing that soon. Um, so, um, it is my understanding, the CTAC, which you are a member of, the Citizens Transportation Advisory Commission, um, they do have, um, vacancies, so if you are a member of the public, and I think we still have a vacancy that we need to fill from the city of Charlottesville, correct?
I'm not sure, but we can check on that.
Um, but, uh, and want to be a part and have some input on our transportation plans, whether that be vehicle, bus, bike pad, then, uh, I urge you to get, uh, uh, apply for the CTAC position. Um, and for those paying attention at home, the land use plan and the comprehensive plan, I don't really have a, a, a final update on that, except to say that in the last meeting at, uh, the board, uh, the, sorry, city council meeting, the first reading, there was, uh, a consensus vote to, uh, uh, hire the long-range planner that has been discussed, that would not only help us complete this comp plan, not necessarily the chapters that we, we've pretty much got nailed down, but specifically the housing, land use, and the map, so that this is, um, in conjunction with the housing strategy, which is also being completed. Uh, it is my understanding, and I, again, I, I don't have complete and final updates on this, I'm still waiting, that, um, this new long-range planner would be the overseer, would be directly under the, um, uh, city manager, so that their time would not be taken from, for other projects, and they would also manage a, um, um, contract with someone, uh, to help complete the three items that we're looking for, which would be housing strategy, transfer, I mean, um, uh, housing chapter, land use chapter, so that those would all combine and be together, and then roll straight into the zoning ordinance changes, which is something that we know that we have wanted to make sure happens for sure. Uh, I don't have any timelines on that, but I see that our NDS director has popped his head in since I've opened my mouth, and I'm sure he has something to say about that.
What you said is right, you know.
That's fantastic, I love being right.
Um, good evening, commissioners, um, uh, Chair Green is right in terms of the update that she provided, uh, the city council vote was consensus in terms of the funding request, and, uh, we requested for six hundred thousand dollars for the zoning rewrite, and council graciously approved that, and then there was also, uh, a request to convert, uh, if you recall, some of you, um, the assistant city manager proposed position to a long-range planner, that was also approved by the city council. And, uh, there was also a request to consolidate, uh, the affordable housing strategy, the completion of the comprehensive plan, and the zoning right, zoning rewrite as a, uh, one RFP, uh, so that council also, uh, approved that, so, uh, we are currently discussing the, uh, the final, uh, the draft of the, um, long-range plan and job description and what have you, so we can put it together, and then that long-range planner is going to help to facilitate the, when we hire a consultant, you know, completion of, uh, the comprehensive plan, where the planning commission stopped, and, uh, also a coordination of, um, the affordable housing strategy, and then, uh, finally, the completion of the, uh, the zoning rewrite, which will take a considerable amount of time, so, uh, once we get in the groove of that, then we prepare some kind of timeline, you know, to give the, uh, the planning commission a clear picture, you know, where we are starting and then where we are headed.
So for clarity, I just want to make sure also, this is not a new position, this is a position that just changed kind of the title, it was already in the budget as funded as an assistant city manager, so it's not going to be that, it'll just be converted over to long-range planner, but still be under the direction of city manager, uh, so that it is a focused.
Is there any additional information about who this person might be, or what planning model that they implement, or that?
We don't know who the person is going to be, because we have to advertise.
Anything about the process, the selection?
Uh, the selection process, uh, yeah, we, um, usually, uh, um, uh, staff-related issues is internal and administrative, uh, but in terms of the interview, uh, we might ask, uh, a representation for the long-range planner from the planning commission or what have you, or place design task force, you know, so, planning commission will participate, and then, secondly, in terms of the, uh, the staging of the projects, you know, the affordable housing strategy, the comprehensive plan, and the zoning rewrite, uh, we're going to use, uh, perhaps a steering committee, you know, for which the planning commission plays, and, uh, HAC, and what, and the public, you know, and, uh, the business community and the, uh, the development committee and staff will be part of that particular, uh, group to oversee the preparation of those documents.
This was pulled together too, kind of from a subcommittee of HAC and, and Lyle, and, uh, they asked me to come in and sit down and say, okay, you know, what do you think, here's what we've got, here's what we've got, I mean, for those of us who've been on the planning commission for a while, I think you understand, um, the frustration it is when documents don't talk to each other, and so we were kind of seeing, all right, here's where we're headed, in three different directions, almost, potentially three different directions, uh, but we wanted to make sure that, that these align, I mean, this is too important for these things not to align. Um, so, that's where we are, that's what I know, um, and, and thank you for coming up, and confirming that I'm not crazy that I've been paying attention. Uh, so, I think we'll have more to come on that, and give us more direction about when we get started back with that, and I don't know when that is right now.
And, uh, is the plan to, for the long-range planner, once they're hired, to draft the RFP to issue, and then hire the consultant, or for that to be drafted beforehand?
That's happening simultaneously.
Well, um, preliminarily, you know, I'm putting some things together, you know, some kind of a template, so, uh, once the person comes, uh, on board, you know, uh, that will be accelerated.
Okay.
But, uh, on a related note, uh, we already have, uh, a draft affordable housing strategy that was pending in the procurement department, so, uh, we have to pull that back and extract the content of that as part of this consolidated RFP.
Got you, thanks.
I don't think it's going, it, it won't be the, from my understanding, there's some, there's some work being done on that right now simultaneously, so it's not a.
So, just to be clear, it's confirmed that this is going to be our new process, we just don't have the consultant on-boarded.
And he's fully funded.
Then tell us what the process is.
What the process would be?
Well, the process would be more like.
What?
Strategies, we have this strategy, these are the best ways to do that, and then come to the planning commission for guidance, right? Based off of.
Yeah, go ahead.
Based off of, I mean, some of the public outreach that we've already done, primarily as well through this, from my understanding, again, uh, for this, this, um, housing strategy and this land use planner, we'll also still do some outreach as well, and make sure that we are.
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this direction, I'm just curious about the timing, you know, what, do we even have an estimation of when this person will be on-boarded?
It will be a few, be a few months before, uh, the person is on board, I can't tell you, it'll be next month, next two months or three months, you know, uh, because it's pretty, we've been trying to fill positions, it's pretty tough, you know, uh, trying to, uh, uh, find qualified people right now.
Thank you.
Good, more questions?
Good. More questions?
Okay. Then I will move on to, Missy, do you have a report by the Department of NDS?
Yes, very briefly, we do have a new planner. His name is Joey Winter, and he joins us from New Kent County. So, he has been here a week. He is in the process of moving into town, and he will come forward to you all in the very near future, but we are very gradually working him into the process. So, we're glad to have him on board. We're still currently recruiting for a number of positions. Ones that affect you all would be the housing coordinator, the ADA coordinator for the city, and the, now, the grants coordinator is leaving. And so, we, we are, and those are just a few of the positions that we are working towards trying to fill right now. So, a lot of people doing a lot of things they don't do every day. But that's just how it works, and we are moving forward and keeping things moving. Just wanted to let you all know and see if you had any other questions concerning our special meeting that's scheduled for February 26th. It's the exact same time as our regular work session, so you don't need any additional item on your calendar. And for that meeting, at this point, we're looking to talk about the subdivision for South First Street. That application was not ready for the meeting this evening, and so, we're hoping that that additional time will allow them the opportunity to be ready. So, that will be what our agenda is on the 26th. And so, we'll have materials out late next week. And Ms. Green's given us some direction on a few extra things to have in there to help explain that, so we will be working towards doing that as part of the review. And that's all we have right now.
Thank you. I, I guess, one of the things that I was made aware of too, it's my understanding that all of the applications have been submitted, and now there's, for the city manager, and there, those applications are under review. And I think interviews are supposed to start next week. So, there's that. Okay. Next on our agenda is matters to be presented by the public, not on the formal agenda. So, at this time, we have one person, Mr. Tubbs, if you'd like to come up. And if anybody else would like to speak to matters, it would be anything on this agenda, since we don't have any other public hearing, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Great. I'll try to be quicker than three minutes. Sean Tubbs, Piedmont Environmental Council. Tonight, you're considering this critical slopes issue for South First Street, and we just urged you to please ensure that this project is done, that this particular application tonight is done with the utmost care. It's great that this will create the first new public housing units in decades here, and I think that's something we all want, and that's long overdue, and we're glad this is proceeding. However, as you go through this, the future residents of this site deserve nothing less than the full, than your full scrutiny of this body on this matter. You know, we understand the need for this to go before council for next week with the schedule that I heard about in the pre-meeting, but just really caution against cutting any corners that might end up leading to an inferior product in the future. At issue here, of course, is this little section of Pollock's Branch, which is an important link in a future north-south connection, a trail connection that will provide residents a way to get elsewhere throughout the city without a car. This stream is such an interesting stream. It was in the strategic investment area. I never knew it existed until that process went forward. And it daylights right there at Elliott Avenue, and I think it's one of those areas that nobody in the city really knows about. That doesn't, that doesn't mean it doesn't deserve attention as we go through this, and I think that, that's good. It's also impaired, and I think that, to the extent that the disturbance of these slopes impacts the waterway in the future, that's something I think is good to know. However, having said all of that, I'm glad I go to the pre-meetings, because I learned about the four conditions that you will consider as part of that. So, the concerns I was having before this meeting have largely, or at least I'm glad that they're being addressed tonight. And I'm also glad that one of those conditions relates to the planting of native species, as opposed to the species that were suggested before. So, so just in general, just please be as thorough as you can tonight in your deliberations, and I look forward to seeing what you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that's on our list, but if there's anyone else that'd like to speak, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and staff. And my name is Emily Dreyfus. I'm an organizer with the Legal Aid Justice Center, and I'm on the advisory council for the Public Housing Association of Residents. And I want to speak overall about the South First Street development process, and thank staff for helping move us to this point. I'm really glad that this is on the agenda, and we'll be on your next one as well. The resident outreach that we've done has been primarily door-knocking, but yesterday and today, we also had two meetings, which were, in spite of this lovely weather, really well attended, relatively well attended. So, I think we've reached close to half of the residents of the currently occupied land, which is not where the development, the first phase is going to be, on the unoccupied land down the hill a little ways past the rec center. And the residents, the, one of the strongest messages that folks at FAR and I are hearing is make it happen fast. People really want to see this redevelopment move forward, and the tax credit application timing has been very challenging. But the folks in the development arm, who hopefully you'll hear from later, will give you some background, and so far, so good. Like, we really are meeting deadlines and getting input along the way, even when we're scrambling to get it in order to hear from people. People are living in, not just at South First Street, but in other public housing sites in some really severely difficult conditions. They're dealing with mold and other air quality problems. They're dealing with buildings that were just not constructed well in the first place and are making life pretty precarious for some families and just unpleasant in a lot of other ways. So, I appreciate your time and consideration on this, and hope we can move it through and help residents get what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matters not on the formal agenda? Or any matter on the agenda for this evening? If not, then I will close the matters by the public. I'm glad to hear that, because I was wondering how the residents were feeling about this project. So, that, that's helpful to know, I think, in the question I asked today. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have four different sets of minutes that we're riveting reading. I hope you all enjoyed them as much as I did. I know that we've had one comment about a member of the public's did not feel as if they, they were represented well, and we got that, so we wouldn't, if we move forward this consent agenda, we would need to take, make note of that recommendation for editing. And then the fifth item is the entrance corridor review by, for Ready Kids. And this is something that we had already heard, but there are minor changes, and this is an entrance corridor review. So, do I have any motions regarding the consent agenda?
Yeah, I would move that we, we accept the consent agenda, but we take into account the revised comments by Bill Emery, they sent us on February 7th.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other comment? We would make, so by voice acclamation, all in favor. Opposed? That motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a joint meeting of the city, of the commission, wait, that's not true. We have none tonight. So, the next item on the agenda is commissioned action items. Nothing tonight. Nobody's talking to you? I'm sorry. We'll make that happen. Party, now you can go up and drink. So, we have three items on the commissioned action items. The first one is critical slopes, and the next two are entrance corridor. So, the first critical slope is South First Street Development Phase One. And I would remind everybody that this is definitely a, this Pollock's Branch that is a part of that if, if the new commissioners have not looked at or seen the SIA, the strategic investment area. This is one of those major parts of the project for this branch to be daylighted from downtown to the county line, and also have kind of a linear park. So, Ms. Rainey, do you have a report? I like these. I don't have to read that long novel before each one.
Good evening. Carrie Rainey with Neighborhood Development Services. Before you today is a critical slope waiver application from the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, or CRHA, in order to construct Phase One of an ultimate redevelopment of the South First Street site. This phase would include 63 multifamily, multifamily residential units, a community resource center, and a library. Original submission provided for staff review represented that no critical slopes as defined by zoning ordinance 341120 would be disturbed by the development. However, subsequent to the posting of the agenda packet, the applicant has supplied a new exhibit showing impacts to critical slopes. Staff has not been provided the sufficient level of detail from construction techniques and activities to confirm the boundaries of impact as shown in the updated exhibit. CRHA has asked the city to authorize it to disturb critical slope area through the Critical Slopes Waiver Application Attachment A to the extent necessary for the construction of the buildings as proposed and shown in Phase One of the redevelopment. Staff recommends the planning commission focus on whether the public benefits of disturbance of the critical slope outweigh the public benefit of keeping the critical slope undisturbed, as well as the potential negative erosion and stormwater impacts to environmentally sensitive area of Pollock's Branch. For consideration, staff proposes four conditions should the planning commission decide to recommend approval of the waiver. Number one, require erosion and sediment control measures that exceed minimum requirements in order to mitigate potential impacts to undisturbed critical slope areas per Section 341120B1A through C, including but not limited to: A, silt fit with wire reinforcement and six feet staking, stake spacing; B, immediate installation of permanent stabilization measures along the southern and eastern limits of disturbance that encroach into critical slope areas within three days of the establishment of temporary grading; and C, other measures in excess of minimum requirements determined by city engineering staff to be necessary to protect Pollock's Branch from sedimentation. Number two, an increase of required stormwater detention of 10% beyond the minimum requirement in order to mitigate potential stormwater impacts to Pollock's Branch per Section 341120B1B through C, to be detailed on the final stormwater management plan and approved by the engineering department prior to plan approval. Number three, the critical slope area outside of improved encroachment boundary shall be clearly marked in the field, and the approved stormwater management plan and construction plan shall include a note requiring such limits of disturbed area to remain for the duration of construction and land disturbing activities. And then number four, final stabilization of the area of critical slopes disturbed shall include replanting of native trees and shrub species to restabilize the critical slopes and potential wildlife habitat. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is also prepared to give a presentation.
So, even though this is not kind of the same situation, why don't we make sure, we ask questions that we have right now, Ms. Rainey, and maybe if, if you have something for Ms. Frisby, who I know is here, the Water Resources Specialist, if y'all have any questions, I know we did have some of those at the beginning. Then let the applicant make their presentation, and they have 10 minutes, and then we would go into discussion, as opposed to back and forth. Sound, okay, great. So, do you have any questions for Ms. Rainey or Ms. Frisby?
Sorry, I missed this one in the pre-meeting. For the recommendation for the permanent stabilization measures, is that, does that help during construction to help with the disturbances from construction vehicles? Or is that intended for down the line, or does it just improve the overall situation of the slope?
Basically, permanent stabilization methods are more substantial than our temporary stabilization methods that would normally be applied, so that there would be less risk of impact to Pollock's Branch from potential failures of those measures in place.
So, the other thing is I want to ask, so that, I noticed on this page, critical slope overlay application, applicant site plan. The drive has exemptions, but parking does not have exemptions in this case?
That is correct. Driveways are exempt under our ordinance, but the areas of parking would not be.
More questions?
Ms. Rainey, so in the material provided, there's engineering drawings. One in particular, sheet number two, existing conditions and the demolition plan, shows trees to be removed. This may be a question for the applicant, but how, are we sure that's the extent of the trees to be removed? I was hearing something from staff in the pre-meeting that there is not, that not enough material has been submitted to fully understand the, the impacts of the project on the environment.
That is correct, and I'm sure the applicant can expand further. However, at this time, our engineering department does not feel confident that they understand the potential construction activities through the site and the potential limits per that area based on construction of buildings next to steep slopes, which has additional requirements from the building code side in addition to the zonings, the zoning ordinance, and are able to say with certainty which trees would be impacted or, you know, potentially critical root zones.
And so, what material would they need to be able to understand that? Or how would they get to that understanding? Is that a conversation with the applicant about their construction methods? Or is that what these conditions are intended to address, which is how to protect that sensitive area from damage during construction?
That is correct. The conditions are an attempt to provide further protection for Pollock's Branch and the, the trees and other, other plantings in that area from the construction, given the unknowns on the site as now. I would have to defer to the Department of Engineering for what specific information they may need in order to assess that impact.
Okay. Thank you.
The four conditions that you named, has the applicant been made aware of those concerns prior to tonight?
Not yet. They were finalized not long ago, so I can provide copies.
I have some questions about the general packet and process. I realize that this is trying to be pushed through rapidly. I understand the need for the expedience. My question is, and page, gosh, way back in the packet, is a letter from the city to the engineer, which has page after page after page after page after page of comments. And it continues on those pages, and I'm, this is for the site plan, correct?
Well, there's two. Both, both memos are in there. And those have been resubmitted and are under review based on, and will be reviewed based on this set of comments.
I guess my question is, is when I see repeat comment, you've asked this once, and so you're asking again.
Correct.
Why are we not getting answers to the questions of, maybe I'll ask the applicant? Okay, that. But secondly, on a site plan, do you make sure that all the, are we making sure that all of the comments are, the comments are addressed before we assign a site plan, or will that site plan come back to us?
The site plan would not come to you under normal circumstances unless so called forward under the provisions of the site plan section of the zoning ordinance. The subdivision plot as a major subdivision is planned to come before you on February 26th at your special meeting time. But all comments would need to be resolved prior to the approval of those documents.
And do you think, based off, and again, this is, I'm going to ask you because you're a professional planner, do you think based off of what we have here with trying to mitigate some of these impacts that we would still be able to achieve what we're looking for in a strategic investment area down the line? Or do you think any of this, I say this because I know the strategic investment area doesn't seem, but this is an opportunity for us to have a public housing project in some of our strategic, and afford all of the amenities that, the rest of... our strategic, and afford all of the amenities that the rest of the city has. So I think this is fantastic, but I want to make sure that we're not, that we're still maintaining that integrity of that area so that we do have that linear park that the housing project can also take advantage of. So do you see any?
I do not see any concerns outright. I will also note that we have been working with the applicant to provide trail easements for our Parks Department along some existing and upcoming trails along Pollux Branch, including to a bridge that may be constructed across at a later date. So I believe those amenities would be in line with the SIA plan.
Right. And are you, is that happening?
As far as we're aware, that's still moving forward. The subdivision plat, as shown, does include pedestrian access easements.
When we think about this as an overlaw, and I can talk about that later as a comment, but thank you. Anyone else have any questions before we hear from the applicant?
Just back to the permanent versus temporary, is, to get it more specific, is a permanent stabilization measure like a retaining wall?
I believe there's a difference between such things that sod versus temporary seeding would be an example of permanent versus temporary. I think retaining wall would be a bit beyond that, you know, in terms of stabilization.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Ashley Davies with Riverbend Development, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Housing Authority, along with Scott Collins, who's our project engineer, who has designed this entire site. And we're very happy to be before you tonight, and I wanted to start off by thanking staff because this has been an expedited process, and staff has worked very closely with us. And as Ms. Green noted, we've had a very thorough review of the plans and plat, and we actually, last week, spent about two and a half hours together going through every single comment with all the engineers, and all those plans have been resubmitted for review, and we feel really good about the place where they are. And, you know, our engineers have very thoroughly reviewed the site. We also have geotechnical professionals out now doing all the soil borings, and Scott's been in contact with the building officials. So we're really taking into account everything that has to do with building these structures adjacent to critical slopes, so we're very aware of that. And backing up, Scott and I have been working with the Housing Authority and the Redevelopment Committee and Public Housing Residence and FAR for the past few months now. And so we're very excited and honored to be a part of this process. It's been since the nineteen eighties that we've had any new public housing, and we all know that the conditions of a lot of our public housing units are really substandard. So we've all been working very hard. It's been a very all-hands-on-deck type of operation in order to get plans together that we can move forward with a March tax credit application. We're working, we have a lot of charitable donations coming in. We're hoping to get significant financial support from the city as well, but there's just, it's a really exciting time because we have the momentum of all these things coming together, and, you know, a lot of players in this game. And I think it's coming together great considering how quickly we have had to move. And in terms of the site, we did look at it with the critical slopes in mind because our initial look at it, you know, we were hoping to completely avoid the critical slopes because we knew that it was additional time for the review. I mean, not to mention that we understand that this site has a fair number of constraints. If you look at it, that whole rear side going down to Pollux Branch is an environmentally sensitive area, so we knew that we wanted to avoid those. And as Ms. Rainey mentioned, we are, in fact, you know, there is a trail system throughout that area. We see it as a passive recreation area for the public and the community to enjoy, and there will be a bridge that crosses the stream directly behind our property. So we view that as a major amenity for the city and for the community and want to protect it. So we did not view the slope areas on the front of the site the same way. So back in the eighties, when these fields were put in, that would have been a more natural slope coming down from the road, and so when the fields were graded in, that created a man-made slope on the front of the property that's much further away from the stream and isn't the same type of environmentally sensitive area. So we don't feel like that area is as critical to the conversation and is going to have the same type of impact that if you were disturbing the back areas of the site. So we did, we were very careful to keep the buildings off the actual critical slopes. As you probably saw in the staff report, there's been, we had some back and forth with staff regarding what our surveyor found on the site versus what the city GIS reports. And so that's why there's been some discrepancy between what we were categorizing as critical slopes versus what the GIS speaks to. And we feel that our information is more precise, but we're willing to abide by the city define critical slopes in order to process this waiver request and move forward. I do want to bring my engineer, Scott Collins, up to speak to the stormwater management of the site and how we're improving that overall. And we have not heard the conditions before Ms. Rainey's report, so I want him to at least kind of speak to his initial thoughts on those, as well as any conversations with the building official about the building techniques and how we can stay off those critical slopes and preserve them in the back, so.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Collins. I'm the engineer on the project. So I feel like we actually are developing the site with the critical slopes very much in mind, and there's two ways you can, there's a right way and a wrong way when you're developing next to critical slopes. The wrong way to do it is when you have critical slopes like this, and then you're building structures above it like this that prolongs that critical slope up to the structures. That's where you have ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of your failures. When you're trying to build above the critical slopes and get things stabilized, everything just starts to kind of sheet flow and wash down, and you have a very hard time impacting those critical slopes and then building to extend those critical slopes up. We're not doing that in this case. Here we have the critical slopes, at the very top of those critical slopes, what we've figured, determined based on our surveys, we are creating a flat bench. The basement level of that structure comes down and ties in to that top elevation of the critical slopes, creating this flat bench that's anywhere between seven feet to about twenty feet from the back of that building. That's, it's close, the closest building to those critical slopes, creating this flat bench, again, flat, not building above, and that basement level ties out and creates that bench. So we're not trying to extend those critical slopes or build above it. We are basically taking that elevation and then cutting the development back at that elevation, creating that area, and then going up from, to that for the three-four split of the apartment building to create the parking lot. So then that parking lot comes in, and that curb and gutter and drainage system cuts off all the drainage at that point from the site that would go to those critical slopes and wash down to Pollux Branch, creating any type of disturbance. It cuts that off, too. So not only are you benching in your development, not building above the critical slopes, you're also cutting off the drainage that goes to the critical slopes that creates erosion on critical slopes. So those two aspects entirely will help protect those critical slopes that exist from Pollux, from our site down to Pollux Branch. And we're not looking to go in and develop into those critical slopes in order to get density or any other developing aspect. We recognize those critical slopes at the beginning of our site design and kept that and developed the whole site around that, trying to preserve hundred percent or at least ninety-five percent of that, based on what, whether you use our survey or use the city survey. So we felt that we've done a whole lot in order to accommodate that. In addition, we worked out with city engineers that we're going to build the front two buildings first and put the parking lot in, and the drainage system, and the curb and gutter system in. Again, cutting off that drainage before we even attempt to build that last building, which means all those two ENS traps and every, all our ENS silt fence and everything that's protecting those critical slopes during construction remains in place, and you're not trying to build right on top of it. At the time you're trying to put that last building in, you have, your drainage area is confined to the space between the critical slopes and your parking lot. So that measure that we worked out with staff in our last discussions last week, when we went through the comments, I think has made a, it's going to make a tremendous impact about the construction viability of this in respect to the critical slopes. As far as the stormwater management, sure, yes, you can increase storage underground. We have underground storage right now for stormwater management, but it's really doing nothing. Increasing the amount of drainage and the underground retention does nothing to preserve the critical slopes. The drainage from that whole system is being picked up with our storm system, taken to the underground retention system, then outfalls into the existing storm pipes that runs through the site. If I can have one more minute, this is important.
Right.
So it outfalls into the existing thirty-six inch pipe, which outfalls directly to Pollux Branch, and we're improving the drainage ditch from that outfall to the, to the, to the stream. But all that's at, that's all at the bottom of the slopes, flat area, and it's just being improved with riprap to the stream. Increasing the underground retention really has no effect whatsoever, and that's just an increased cost. Additional cost to the Housing Authority, which is not what we want to be doing, increasing cost for things that are not going, going, trying to do what you're trying to do is protect the slopes, other way, there's other means, like definitely increasing the sediment traps and putting wire fence. We've already, we've shown all that along the critical slopes, protecting during construction, absolutely. Using the money to use for more permanent stabilization like sod when you finish that last building, before you take away the ENS measures, that's important. That's good use of the money. Increasing stormwater management underground, no, not for this one.
Are you speaking specifically on this, these conditions?
Yes, ma'am. And this is the first time I saw these, too, so yeah, I'm just.
Number two is what are you speaking to?
Absolutely.
So hang tight. Let's do some questions, and I'm sure we've got a ton of questions. I know I do. Of course. Ma'am, we're going to do the questions here, but I needed you to have spoken at the matters by the public. That was the time to speak on this. So, but I, Ms. Rainey, could you get with the public and see if there's something? Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to make sure you're heard, so hang tight with us.
So I'm a little confused. So would you walk me through, once again, the alternative you are recommending in place of item two, recommendation two? Could you walk me through that again?
Sure.
Did you walk us through what you were going to do instead, but I didn't quite follow you?
Oh, okay. Basically, I'm supporting comments number, condition number one, and three and four, I think.
But you mentioned that there was something else you were doing instead of two.
We're implementing with condition number one about the step, and number three about the increased erosion and sediment control measures during construction. And that's also where I was talking about, we increased, we inserted another erosion sediment control phase. We were basically phasing the project to where we had to make sure that building number three, which is the building adjacent to the critical slopes, gets built last, where they come in and put the parking lot in first, and they can work on the upper two buildings. But effectively, they stabilize the upland areas, and that substantially decreases the amount of drainage that comes to the critical slopes during construction.
Will that do that to the identical degree as implementing recommendation number two, or does it just reduce it a bit?
Would do more, more than.
Would do more?
Yes, absolutely. It would be, it will do a hundred times more than what number two, condition number two, would do.
I wonder what the architects in the room think.
We might get Mr. Frisbee.
We're going to hear from the city engineer.
We are going to hear from the city engineer, and yeah, I think this is.
And that was recommended by the city engineer as, that's what came out of our conversation with the city engineer as a creative approach to the site, because it means that you're not exposing all the area that is, you know, above the critical slopes at the same time. Instead, you're working up close to the street, getting your systems in, so you're, by creating those systems and the detention, you're protecting those slopes and the outfalls down below.
That was a question I had with all of this, how you're planning on doing this, are you using low-impact development? Because you've got to, I mean, I have a little knowledge about building a building, and you've, you're going to have to get into the critical slopes a little bit more than just that corner to put the footings in and build the building. So it's a little bit more than what's shown on here.
We've should, that's why we increased the limits, the possible limits of disturbance for the critical slopes at those two corners. That's really our biggest impact. But when you bench it in, you have six and a half feet from those corners to the start of those critical slopes of what we consider the start of the critical slopes. That is enough.
Areas in red.
What's that? Using the, using the city GIS, they are extending it further into our footprint. But again, we're taking that elevation, which we have surveyed, and we're benching in the development. So that, that start elevation of the critical slopes is the level with the basement floor of our building. So you have this whole, you have this flat ridge that's anywhere between six and a half feet to, I think the, I think it's like fifteen, twenty feet at the farthest part of that building.
So you're suggesting that with the critical slopes being surveyed, the best plan to look at would be the, not the one with the red?
But the gray.
Any more questions on this?
I think I heard you mention there, as part, one of the things you want to do instead of two is sod at the end as a permanent stabilization. It looks like one B is for putting in that permanent stabilization right after you guys start construction. Do you guys, and then I guess to put in, the final step of stabilization will be to put in native trees. Is that a problem with you guys, that three-day part of one B?
No, I get it.
I mean, we can do it.
Yeah, I mean, we can do most anything. You're talking about immediate stabilization of, you know, going in after it's disturbed, you're going to go ahead and stabilize it while it's matted during the erosion sediment control phase, and then once you build the, you need time to build the building, and once you finish, say, okay, the building's done, let's go ahead, before we take our silt fence away with wire reinforcing protection and everything else that we're, and diversion berms that we're, it's basically, it's the silt fence, then the diversion berm, cutting off all the drainage, taking into those traps. Before you remove any of those measures, you go in and sod and stabilize the whole area, then you take out the measures, and everything ties in, and it's stable. That's, that's the way it should be done. And that's what we're, that's our approach.
Do you think this one was put into place, not without the basic knowledge of building the top, the northern two most buildings as opposed to that southern building first?
That was, that plan that we just talked about, we talked about, we talked about with the engineers last Tuesday, and they were on board. and they were on board with that concept. We submitted it on Friday. But this condition, they probably haven't had a chance to review that, 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 um, plan since, between now and this, making up this, um, these conditions, I would think that might be the case. But, um, certainly in our meeting, they were nodding their heads and saying, yes, that sounds like the correct approach. You write that up, you show us the actual plans, and I think we're on board here. That was the feedback from our meeting.
To you, is, is there any advantage of all, at all of using those permanent stabilization methods as your temporary stabilization in the beginning? Or is that not worth it because the sod won't take root?
It's, it's un, it's an unnecessary expense because you have diversion berms in place and you have wire reinforced sill fence in place. And then they're going to trapping measures with just the sediment traps. So you have all that in place, there, and you're not just, well, technically, you're not even disturbing that area anyways because you're disturbing, you're disturbing just what you need to do to, in order to put in the sill fence and the berms. And then you're disturbing above it in order to put the parking lot in. And then certainly, the parking lot would be here eight feet higher than that bottom level, over that hundred feet where the building's gonna be built. So you, you'll have a, a temporary measure, you'll have, at some point, before you start building the, the hurt building, you'll have, you'll grade from that parking lot to a certain point, like a probably three-to-one slope. So you'd come and mat that, I mean, come in and put in sod and then taking it up. Three months later, it seems a little unnecessary when you have the diversion berms and everything else in place, um, protecting it. Now, as soon as that, those diversion berms and sill fence is gone, absolutely, that's where you spend your money.
So you're saying that before that, you would have matting down over top of the recently graded area?
Yeah.
To stabilize it?
That's right.
Does it make sense to have that, uh, the sod of the med, media, uh, the permanent stabilization? Since you're, uh, phasing that construction, does it make sense to add that and that? I'm gonna call it the, the two buildings closest to the road. Uh, does it make sense to, to have that in before you start the building of the other to stabilize that area? Because you've also got that play area to, between the two.
Right. If you mat it, if you come in and, and grade it and then just straw and mat it, you're essentially doing the same thing. Um, because you're, because you're still in road control, um, mode. And so you still have the berms and the sill, and the wire sill fence to protect it. So you've already cut off the drainage to that point with the parking lot you just created. You have the, you'll have the curb and gutter in the parking lot, cutting off the drainage. Now you just come in and mat your, your, what we'll call it, temporary grading where the building number three's gonna go. You, you just come and, you put, put in the grade, you mat it, you seed and straw and mat it, and that locks it in.
I'm talking about, I don't know what you're calling.
Add sod to the first two.
Right. I'm talking about when you complete.
Oh, when you first, the first two buildings?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, certainly, yeah.
So you got that, you've got that play area, uh, or passive, uh, flat field area?
That's where you spend the money, yes, yes.
So, does that make sense?
Yes, to stabilize those areas.
To stabilize, as soon as these are constructed and built, to stabilize this area and this area with the permanent sod?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And then what you're saying is this, this automatically takes care of that erosion from this, plus you've already got it sod.
Yes, that's, that's what, that's where your money is doing, you're using the money for permanent features on the site too because it would make the site better to have it sodded. And if you're gonna use it, try to stabilization for, at a hundred percent, at, at immediately, that's the best way to do it. That's perfect.
Does that make sense to anybody?
So on the, um, existing conditions and demolition, uh, plan, you show certain trees to be removed, and then other trees to be left. How firm is this?
Very firm. We, we've actually, the survey went out, um, between, um, December and January and field located every single tree in that whole area along those slopes.
So the, the trees that are left, um, how, uh, well, we, I, I want to be sure that we're not benching the, into their root systems to the trunk of the tree. And that, because that would only destroy those trees that are shown to be left, but the construction methods would be killing them.
That's right. So the trees that we showed to be removed, those are the ones that are past the slope, that sort of cutoff bench where the bench is gonna start. And most of those, every single one of those trees, because it's in more of a forest condition, they're all growing straight up. And most of the branches, as you know, you know, when you're in a forest condition, they go straight up as opposed to kind of going out with the root systems, and that's what you have here. So when we, we felt very confident where, that we made sure, anything that was close to that slope area, that we made sure that we were showing that it's being, um, impacted so that we could get, we could be very accurate with what we did.
And, um, and would you be opposed to a condition that, um, uh, requires a non-movable, um, screen to protect those existing trees, the root zones of those existing trees to be kept in place during construction?
I think that's acceptable. That's, yeah, that's fine, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm gonna write that down. The non-movable screen.
I've already written it, I'll send it to you.
Fantastic. Could we con, uh, add a, a comment to memorialize the construction methods of the buildings for the first two buildings closest to the road? As a, as phasing of that construction for increased, uh, erosion impacts? Does that sound, does that sound doable? And everybody else, does it?
And that's reflected in our site plan.
So I think why this is coming up is that there's seems, there's a fear that there's so much unknown because we don't have that.
Yeah.
That we want to make sure.
Absolutely.
Right?
It's totally fine.
And you know, if you two decide to quit tomorrow, then what do we got? Nothing but words.
You'd be so bored.
I know. Actually, that's true, day and night.
With, and, I mean, just to go back, I, I spent a day out there with the tree commission and the, uh, Charlottesville area tree stewards planting trees in that, um, in that recreational area and that field that are now gonna be destroyed with your plan. But, uh, it gave me.
But we're gonna get some new affordable housing.
I know. Um, but it gave me the, I, I actually took the opportunity to walk down into the Pollack's branch area. And it was just a very, it, it was like walking into another world. Um, once you got off that field and you started to go down into those woods, it's not well-respected now. There's a lot of trash from, from house sites nearby. But it doesn't take much to really see the potential, the wonderful potential of that branch and that area. And the importance of it to be protected, and it will be a resource for this development and the other developments along Pollack's. And I believe it's at the end of Pollack's where it joins Meadowbrook that there is a park that's planned down there too. Yeah, so it, it's a really rare resource that we want to make sure we protect during this construction process and by this project.
Absolutely, no, it's great.
I agree. Questions? More questions? I would actually like to hear just a little bit from Mr. Frisby since we've kind of changed up things that he's, and see if we're still on the right track, if that's all right. And then do you have some things to us that we need to take into consideration from the public? Yeah, that'd be great.
Did you get my email, Lisa?
Just to note, um, that was in order to clarify the, the impacts, um, to other folks' property in the area. So I was able to clarify that our personal property would not be impacted directly in terms of construction happening on property and those sorts of things.
Thank you for doing that, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you were listening in.
What do you feel about eliminating, uh, number two? What is, what was the intent there by adding that condition?
Uh, I would have to defer to engineering staff on that one for, uh, their rationale for adding that one in. Though, the, I do agree that there's not a direct correlation between the critical slope and this underground detention system because the runoff that is being sent to this underground system comes from other parts of the site. The one rationale that I would see for including it would be that, uh, making this system bigger just provides additional detention of the storm water that is coming off of the site. Because there is gonna be a lot more runoff generated by the site, uh, in the post-development condition. We're going from sixty-six hundred square feet of impervious surface to sixty-one thousand square feet. So there's a lot more runoff that's gonna be generated. This device is meant to control the flow, uh, the rate that that flow leaves the site. If it has more capacity, it just has a little bit more muscle to, to keep back extra flow in those larger storm events. So that to me is a possible reason, um, for, for expanding the size of that. But I, I would defer to our engineers to, uh, as to what, what they were thinking on that one because they were the ones that, uh, put that one in.
But by, by doing this development and increasing, increasing the impervious area, there's already detention devices being put in to, to, um, offset that increased impervious runoff?
Correct. That's the existing system sized as they have it in the plan. That meets the, the state and our local requirements for the quantity, uh, what water quantity requirements. So this would be making it bigger than that, uh, in order to have it be able to handle more water than, than what is actually required.
Thank you.
So my question, my question is, um, do you feel like the alternative that the applicant presented is sufficient?
I don't know that, which alternative would that have been?
So instead of, um, and if I'm understanding correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, instead of having to, um, it was almost like B was unnecessary, it was an unnecessary expense? And, um, by doing the first two buildings first, that that should take care of that?
Uh, again, erosion and sediment control is a little outside of my area of expertise. I think the intent of B is that, is just to get the area in the vicinity of the critical slopes permanently stabilized as quickly as possible. And it, it may be that the way this is worded isn't quite getting at that. But, um, instead of going to a, a temporary measure and then again later to a, a permanent stabilization, just the intent is to get that area stabilized as quickly as possible so that there's not, um, sedimentation and erosion of that area. So perhaps crafting language to that, uh, intent might, might be more helpful.
Thank you.
If, if you're, we're going to include this, um, requirement, you know, shouldn't it be more specific about the, the volume of the, uh, mitigation, uh, pool? You know, I know they come in different sizes, and so you're gonna put one in.
There'll be specific regulations per.
So we're not gonna have to decide what that is?
No, the, the regulations already put in place what, what will be required.
We would require, uh, something in excess of the minimum that is required.
Well, that's one thing you all are, are have here to talk about and are talking about.
So what I meant, what I'm asking is, it's kind of hard to say without being more specific about how much in excess.
That, that would be the ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, so it's, instead of, if you have a hundred percent to get to your compliance, this is saying a hundred and ten percent instead of that. I understand, you don't know the volume of the system, so you don't know how much additional capacity that is, is that what?
What I'm really getting at is the cost of some of these things, they're, they're enormous when you, when you look at them underground.
Yeah, it's a big, I think it's a ten-foot or so diameter pipe, something that, in that neighborhood.
And it's designed already for the hundred-year storm, so it's handling major storm events.
I need you to come up so she can. No, no, come on up so she can make sure she gets it, because I want her to not be able to, uh, or not miss any minutes.
I just want to make, make sure everybody understands when you're talking about the sizing of this. This storm sewer, underground detention system is already sized to contain the hundred-year storm event. So making it ten percent bigger than the hundred-year storm event really is sort of irrelevant and unnecessary. So you're not really achieving anything by making it bigger because it's already contained the hundred year and it's releasing the storm event at, um, at an energy balance formula which basically equates to pre-existing, pre-existing conditions. So holding it, making it bigger, you're just, you're creating more detention, but it's unusable. Because unless we have like maybe a five-hundred-year storm, but that's unnecessary at this point.
You want to comment on the additional pervious surface, impervious surface?
Sure, um, yeah, basically, that's why the underground detention system was designed. It collects all the runoff from all these, uh, impervious surfaces, then treats it, holds it, and releases it at a rate that's, based on the energy balances. You have to balance the, our design system to how it compares to the pre-existing condition as it is right now with, as a field and forested area and everything else. And that relate, and that release rate has to be the same equivalent or less. So it's all being done per state regulations and it's being released equivalently, at the equivalent rate or less than what it, the conditions as it, it stands today. And that's already being achieved with our current design. And that's why additional storage of, of underground system is not necessary for this design.
No?
No, no more questions?
No, no, we're not. Scott, are there any other issues with any of the other conditions?
Uh, no ma'am, everything else.
We wanted to turn the tables on you guys and give you something at the meeting instead of you giving us something at the meeting and stuff. How you like it?
It's fair.
Um, no, I, I think that all the other conditions seemed, um, um, seem reasonable and, um, a lot of them have been, have been addressed or currently addressed with what we submit, resubmitted for review. And, um, with a little bit of tweaking to what's been submitted, we can address the rest of those conditions.
If there are no more questions, then I would say we could go to comment or. Our motion.
Can we motion and then discuss?
We could, we probably should discuss, uh, and then that way you would make sure that your motion includes everything we had discussed instead of doing multiple amendments. I'd like to avoid the multiple amendment today, so. I am fully, uh, ready for a motion, but I think that we do need to, to have a little bit of a discussion based off of this critical slope waiver condition. And we can go down these and kind of get a poll really quick to see where we are on this.
Well, I was just gonna start it off by saying, um, I, for one, uh, would be okay with eliminating one B and two, and then adding a condition about, um, putting in non-movable protection for the root zones of the existing trees to be left.
Would those words to that be something like, prior to disturbance at site installation of a fixed immovable barrier to protect root zones of trees identified to be preserved at the drip line and remain throughout the connect, uh, completion of the construction?
That sounds beautiful.
Does it?
That's poetic.
Is it?
It's poetry.
I'm on fire today.
Record that and I can listen to it before I go to sleep.
It's recorded.
There we go. Can you send him the tape of that? Fantastic. Did I capture what you were thinking?
Yes.
Fantastic. Um, and then remain, so just keep three and four? Based off of that, does anybody have any comment on that? Are we all seeming to have our head nodding? Yeah? I would like to add one more condition if I might, and I've got some more wording to that that I just.
Wow.
I know.
Can you give you a full piece of paper for the next?
No, I like this tiny one. Memorialize construction methods presented by the applicant to phase construction of the buildings. Parenthesis, first two adjacent to the first treat first, to be, well, to be constructed first in order to stabilize site and create a more efficient erosion measure. So, no, should I add? That wasn't as poetic as the other one.
Yeah, memorialize.
Scott kept talking, it was hard for me to do that. I kept getting confused about all the other things.
Robert Frost had the same problem.
Right. It's tough.
Okay. Does that sound like something that we would be, uh?
I wouldn't.
In favor of, of what?
Sorry, could you read that one more time?
Memorialized construction methods presented by the applicant to phase construction of the buildings, meaning the first two adjacent to First Street to be constructed first in order to create a more, a better stabilized site and create more efficient erosion measures. The second time better? I don't know, lost it. No? You may read it third.
That's good.
Okay, good.
I might have a modification to...
We can do that right now without a motion on the table, which... Yeah. Go.
Wait for a second. Oh, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion, that's why we're here.
Because we wanted to get rid of the permanent stabilization within the three days, so during construction, but we wanted it, we liked this permanent stabilization measures because they're better over, you know, in the long run, so maybe we can fold permanent into four, where final stabilization of the areas of critical slopes disturbed shall be permanent and include replanting of native tree and shrubs.
So you're saying take some of that one B to put it in four?
Yeah, just the permanent part.
Final stabilization of these areas of critical slopes disturbed shall include...
Or shall include permanent stabilization measures?
B.
I'm changing that.
Either.
Isn't that implied by final stabilization?
But I think, no, I think you're right because I think one B talks about like sod as opposed to...
I think...
At final, kind of final sodding it as opposed to seed and straw.
Except for the trees, but...
And B only talks about replanting of native tree shrubs and not necessarily the sodding, the permanent stabilization. No?
Okay. Like a fine point.
You can have that.
Semantics.
It's, I'll sign it too.
Cool.
Final stabilization of the areas of critical slopes disturbed shall be... No. All right, hold on.
So he started out by going, slopes disturbed shall be permanent, including, so what you have here is where...
Do you have that written down or was that all in your head?
All right, yeah, no, that's all in my head. All right, let's go with, final stabilization of the areas of critical slopes disturbed shall be permanent measures, including replanting of native trees. So we're just putting B, permanent measures, and then including.
Shall be permanent measures, including. Okay. One thing I forgot to say on my little... Which may help with the flow. Memorialized construction methods, create a more efficient erosion measures as well as... Well, no, that's not going to help at all. I wanted to say, what we had talked about, adding the permanent stabilization measures for the first two buildings at the time of CO, that way that's done and then it goes...
Isn't that what memorialized?
Memorialized construction methods presented by the applicant to phase construction of buildings and add permanent erosion measures. To be constructed first in order to stabilize, okay. Does that sound okay? Just adding that permanent stabilization for the first two? Are we good with the rest of the condition?
I concur.
Would you like to make a motion? I thought you were ready to make a motion. Would you like for me to hand you the motion?
Well... Do I have to read all the numbers too?
Suggested motion, and then you can add this. No, you want to go here. Here? You can pick one of these or say both of them, and then you say my motion includes the following conditions.
As stated prior.
You can say as stated prior, do you have all of them, would you have them all or do we need to reread them?
Well, we're gonna, we would take the bits and pieces that were noted. We have to construct this tomorrow morning, so it'll be very quick.
We recommend approval of the critical slopes waiver subject to conditions based on the findings that referred here, public benefits and physical conditions. On the existing development of the property, compliance with the city's critical slopes regulations would prohibit or unreasonably restrict the use of development of the property per section three, four, one, one, two, zero, B, six, D, I, I. My motion for approval includes the following conditions that the staff recommendations put forth prior to the meeting. Removing one B, removing two, and adding the conditions previously discussed by the commissioners.
You'd like to second that motion? So we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about the conditions? Okay. Any more further discussion? Ms. Krizy, we call roll.
Mr. LaHondra?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolensberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Fast, remember we want it done fast, but not bad. So... We have, the next two items are entrance corridor. Would we like a five-minute break, and I do mean five minutes?
No.
No? Roll. Then I would like to gavel us out of the planning mission and gavel us back into the entrance corridor review board and ask that we...
Lisa, before we move forward, can I just make one comment? Yes. So in concerning to that project, I think it is awesome. I liked how the engineers is trying to make sure that we're not wasting money and working backwards. I also would just ask that they are sensitive to the neighborhood. That neighborhood is already under massive construction right there at the bottom apartments, Mill Road. The engineers or whoever is working there have not been very great about keeping that road without huge ditches in it and having debris and stuff everywhere, so this is very important, but I think you also need to keep in mind of the, I'm sure that's why the other lady was here, the residents and homeowners that are already in the area.
Thank you. And you guys have a unique opportunity. We've had so much, maybe some negative feedback about the SIAE development, but this is a unique opportunity for our projects, public housing projects, to be able to, you know, use this and it not just be a, something that people look at. I think it's going to be a unique opportunity for the people in this development to use it, to have transportation, whether it's bike or walkability straight to downtown. I think this is awesome, but very sensitive project, so thanks.
Ms. Dow, to your point, I just wanted to note that we're having a meeting with the neighborhood on February twenty-eighth, the evening of February twenty-eighth, to review the plans, so for anyone at home, we'll be at the South First Community Center.
What time?
I believe it's at five-thirty on the twenty-eighth.
I'm going to ask that we hold all comments so we can make sure the people at home can hear. There is a public meeting with the residents about this project with final plan designs?
Correct. February twenty-eighth, South First Community Center. I believe it's at five-thirty.
Okay.
Can you send that to us, please?
Absolutely, I'll send an email.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, we are in the entrance corridor review period, and first on the agenda is the Gallery Hotel.
You said two things, I'm there going, what did I forget to write a report on? But it's the, that other memo.
All right.
We had...
Did they provide a presentation through...
And I gave it to Joseph...
Let's see it.
Are they back there behind the curtain? Well, at the same time, we've discussed this a couple times, discussed this a month ago, so this isn't a, there's no, nothing mysterious or new particularly. I'll go through this quickly and just on the staff report side of things, this is a certificate of appropriateness request for Gallery Court at one forty Emmett Street. It's a half-acre site within the Route twenty-nine or the entrance corridor, sub-area C. Since being destroyed by fire in May twenty-seventeen, the hotel and the lot have been fenced off and vacant, the parcel has a single unsignalized entrance off Emmett Street, and there's an existing city sidewalk along Emmett Street. The application tonight is requesting a COA to replace the destroyed building with a seven-story hotel to accommodate seventy-nine rooms and suites, structured parking, and a street-level cafe. Last year, the city approved a special use permit for the additional height, and the project retains the single point of entrance and egress on Emmett Street. Relative to the preliminary design that was presented during the SUP review, this final design is consistent in massing scale and configuration, and it's only in materiality and color that it deviates from that earlier design. And within the building's first three floors is a structured parking facility, and the parking structure in the hotels, three lower floors form a pedestal for an L-shaped massing of the upper floors. Along Emmett Street, which is the west facade, the lower level features a street-level cafe. Entry to the parking garage and a trellis patio is above the cafe. On the south side, the facade features a ground-level patio area and a trellis third-floor balcony. And then also on that western facade, the upper floors then step back, and there's a full-height tower with anchors the southwest corner of the building. So quickly compared to the preliminary design, the proposed materiality and colors follow a more contemporary palette. The exterior floors of floors one and two are clad with porcelain tiles and punched metal windows with metal storefront sections. At the street level, the street-level cafe is clad with porcelain tile, a metal canopy, and a black storefront panel. Above the canopy is a second-floor patio area with metal trellis, glass metal rails. Floors three through six then feature black, blue glazed brick with punched metal windows and framed with metal cladding. The seventh floor has metal panels and punched metal windows. As I said, at the southeast, or I'm sorry, southwest corner, there's a tower that's clad in porcelain tiles, and it's full-height of the building with storefront metal-framed windows. And overall, the building is articulated by three physical elements, the tower in the corner, the hotel itself, and the one-story projection for the cafe and patio above. You all, as the ERB, must consider in granting a certificate of appropriateness, you must consider the EC design guidelines in determining the appropriateness of proposed construction within an entrance corridor. Employing those guidelines, staff offers the following recommendations. The building, this building's height, mass, and scale is appropriate. This contemporary interpretation of traditional architecture is an appropriate concept. The design provides variation and articulation. The proposed materials and colors are appropriate. The proposed building is appropriately located close to the property lines with concealed interior structured parking. Landscaping is proposed at the courtyard area and along the streetscape. The site layout accommodates the hotel's function, including vehicular traffic and pedestrian access. The public sidewalk has been moved closer to the building so that the street trees can be located between the sidewalk and Emmett Street, creating a more welcoming entrance. The building's design, massing scale, materials, and landscaping elements will provide a positive contribution to this redeveloping segment of the entrance corridor. Relative to this proposal being compatible with the features and characteristics of other buildings and structures within EC, recent building demolitions have left this segment of Emmett Street all but devoid of nearby structures. The proposed hotel's massing scale and extended facade along Emmett Street have similarities to the large hotel that until last year stood across the street at one oh five Emmett Street. However, they differ, and how they differ will provide positive contributions to the future character of this corridor. Just to point those out, the hotel across the street, again, it was standing when this was proposed, had no articulation. Gallery Court, while taller, has an articulated facade. One oh five Emmett Street had a visible story-high section of rooftop equipment. Gallery Court's mechanical units will be, will not be visible. One oh five Emmett Street is close to the road, there was no plaza or outdoor seating, no street-level amenities. Gallery Court has a wide sidewalk and street-front cafe and hotel entrance. And one oh five Emmett Street, the upper floors featured large, I think it was plexiglass panels within metal filigree panels. Gallery Court's upper levels feature brick, metal, and punched windows. Finally, there are ten design principles for entrance corridor projects. Mention them and then offer the observations. One is design for corridor vision. The streetscape design that we have will be coordinated with ongoing streetscape enhancements proposed for the corridor. Preserve history. While the original building was lost to fire, this project will restore the site's use as a hotel, and furthermore, through design and display, the new hotel will create a connection to the original and its historic past. Facilitate pedestrian access. The proposed hotel is approximate to the University of Virginia, Berwick Street Shopping Center, the corner and downtown. That encourages its guests to walk or utilize public transit to those places. Maintain human scale in buildings and spaces. Those are two items. A low-rise mass in front of the building and the garage entry make the scale appropriate at the street level. The wide sidewalk facilitates pedestrian activity. Limited open area on the site is landscape, and the south-facing patio area provides a welcoming outdoor space for guests. Preserve and enhance natural characters. The existing site is ninety-nine percent impervious cover. Through urban stormwater practices and landscaping, the new sign reduces impervious cover to roughly ninety-three percent. Create a sense of place and inviting public realm. The design provides a seven-foot pedestrian sidewalk, a six-foot planted buffer along the curb, and the cafe space will activate the street and provide a community gathering space. Create restrained communications, and that's in reference to signage, no signage has been submitted, that will all have to go through a separate sign permit review process. Screen incompatible uses and appurtenances. The parking is within the structure and where visible concealed, on the backside, it's concealed by landscaping and building elements. And respect and enhance Charlottesville's character. The proposed hotel maintains the site's historic use as a hotel, and it will contribute to a walkable and bikeable environment, create jobs for the community and hotel rooms for visitors. With that said, staff recommends approval of this proposal as submitted and suggests the following as conditions of approval. One, lamping of exterior lighting to be dimmable and not exceed a color temperature of three thousand K. Two, the mortar color should be reviewed by staff. Three, signage requires separate permits and approvals by zoning, and all internally illuminated signage shall appear to be lit white at night. Four, rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened within the appurtenance. Five, metering and/or electrical service equipment for the proposed street lamps to be installed in the public right-of-way, and for the hotel's occupants, that would be whatever, electrical service equipment, will be fully concealed or located so as to allow full screening. That's what I have quickly. Any questions? Otherwise, the applicant is here as soon as we...
Any questions? I want to, again, remind us we're the entrance corridor review board. I know there was public comments about the eighty-foot height and things like that. That is not in the purview of what we are discussing this evening as much as there may want to be that conversation. So, I appreciate the outline of, starting on page five, of the provisions of the entrance corridor design guidelines. That was great to step by step that, to answer those, so I appreciate that, that was helpful reading. So I appreciate that, that was helpful reading.
Yeah, so you mentioned in last January or in January, the guidelines are, I went through them point by point by point and they're, it's fairly clear on what we, ultimately architecturally comes down to how you feel about this. So I'll take a seat.
Yeah, I have one, just one quick.
Sure.
Condition for the roof screening.
Yes.
Hopefully I'm picking, getting picked up. Does that imply like 360?
Yeah, and this is, the last two items are, well, that and the one about the electrical metering reflects things we've heard from the community, both EC and BAR projects. And a lot of it's come out of the BAR, where we've had BAR members walking down West Main and seeing some of the buildings and saying, my God, I didn't know we would see all those mechanical units. So have that in there. I'd let the architect address how that would be done, but I think the condition would be if you're putting something up on the roof, we want it behind a screen. And again, the same thing with the.
Yeah, but on all four sides.
That's correct, yes. So yeah, if you want to clarify that. And I think that's something that we, we should be stipulating because it's, as I said, too often after the fact, folks say, why is that there? Or gee, I didn't know I would see, you know, 16 electrical meters on the side of that apartment building. So, thank you.
Wait, you're asking me to help you with that? That's absurd.
Hey Bill, the switch, there's a switch over there too that controls these lights, the water washers. Can you hit that?
Did you guys?
Do this, go to.
Do you guys have a thumb drive with the presentation?
I'm going to go to planning commission agenda.
You're going to get it from there? Okay. They're having difficulty projecting here, but they'll be able to project there.
See, otherwise we could access the. Rory's machine. It doesn't have internet access, otherwise I'd simply go to the agenda and scroll through.
I mean, we've all got it.
You've got it, but.
Got it.
You can hold this up and speak through it.
It's not just the public, we'll be missing out.
But Lisa's not back yet. See, you didn't have to do this.
Yeah.
What are we going to be looking at that's substantially different than what we saw?
Mostly architectural elements.
Colors.
Materials, maybe we can pass. Yeah, if you don't have it, I think that works.
I've seen it several times, I'm not sure that.
Right. Yeah, you've got the show, no different.
Yeah, he, I mean, I sent this, I'm throwing those guys under the bus, but we sent it to Jer when we had it and so.
I think, I think we're fine. We've got this in our packet.
And you've been here before.
We've definitely had some.
It's good to be back again. I'm Jay Cox with Water Street Studio, the landscape architects on the job. This is Neil and I theme with MBJ.
I'll remind you, you've got a 10 minute presentation.
All right, here we go. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, so again, the site that you know, the way we place the building and everything orients directly to the street, it creates a nice streetscape with active street level. Looking in the windows at that first level cafe and some of those small outdoor terraces really enlightens the street. We're looking at the site plan here. I'm not sure, you've seen most of it before, that'd be page four. You can see some of the elements here along Emmett Street. We're expecting a lot of pedestrian flow in and out based on where the building is in relation to UVA and JPJ Arena. So all the entrances again orient towards the front, towards the street. For people on foot or wheelchair, the project's going to provide a wide buffered sidewalk, seven feet wide minimum. Gets a little wider towards the south and then you'll have large shade trees with a six foot planted buffer, as Jeff said. And we have a mixed palette of dynamic plants that's going to activate that, make it an interesting and comfortable place to walk. There's also a lot of glazing on that first floor, so you'll have a lot of eyes on the street and interesting things to look at through the window. People on bicycles also get something out of this project. We're, you know, Beeple, the owner, he's not here tonight, but he's been on the steering committee for the Emmett Streetscape project. And so we're connecting the, providing a five foot bike lane along the frontage of this property that will connect to the larger network being proposed as part of that project. Along the southern edge of the site, which I guess would be page left for you, there's another low hedge and a small outdoor gathering space. That's also paved with permeable pavers. It's a stormwater BNP that's going to take some of that roof water and hold it and infiltrate it. Along, jumping up to the northwest corner, along the railroad embutment, we'll have the mechanical yard, which will be screened to meet the ERB requirements with the building material that's sympathetic to the rest of the building, which I'm going to let Neil jump in and talk about.
I'm Neil Bart, I'm the architect for the project and Mr. Patel extend his apology for not being here. He's in India and couldn't reel in his flight back. So I'll quickly walk you through the architecture. And the first few pages, starting from five, are the floor plans and you've seen them before. The first three levels are parking with a hotel lobby on the ground floor. The fourth floor is where we have the boardroom public area and the terrace facing the creek, which will become a public space. On the first floor, we have the cafe, which basically activates the street and a terrace above it, but I'll probably let you see on the rendering more than on the plans. So fifth, sixth and seventh floors are all guest rooms, except on the seventh floor there is an open terrace which allows for a rooftop bar and the deck on that floor. The question about the rooftop equipment, we have located them right in the middle of the footprint, so will not be visible and we will be agreeable to the condition that it will not be visible from four sides of this hotel. So we'll ensure that it will not be visible from any, anywhere. They will be screened appropriately. There's a building section which gives you a general idea how the floors stack on top of each other, how the parking works and how the terrace, you can see on the fourth So I'll skip the sections unless you have a question, but I'll focus on the rendering. So the, starting from page 12, where we have shown the history of this design, we showed you what was initially was proposed at SUP. Then after we getting the comment from the planning board, we updated the design with introduction of the street level cafe, which activates the street level. And then we further got the comments from the, on the SUP as well as in a work session with ERB last time. So we updated this design to basically achieve three things. We are using the contemporary materials, sorry, the traditional materials, but in a contemporary colors and interpretation. We have achieved the, the loading and loading of, of goods and services within the structure by raising the floor height of the garage. And you can see the high entrance to the garage, which will allow any vehicle to go in and deliver and leave. So there won't be any delivery outside to alleviate any traffic congestion on Emmett Street. We were asked to eliminate some mass on the tower, so we took off the large cornice we had and a large cap on the tower, minimize the impact of the tower by reducing the cap on the tower. The cafe on the street level provides obviously the street activation, but in addition to that, we provided a seating on top of the cafe on the first level for the second level of the cafe, which will be an open terrace and there will be seating there, which will be accessible from the cafe. And Jake will explain all the street level cafe seating which we have and the landscaping. So you can see how we activated the streets. This rendering we have done in two fashion, one when the trees on the, on the sidewalks or around the building are not fully grown and the next one, and this first exhibit gives you all the materials which you have proposed. So most of the building has basically the blue, black brick on the body of the building. The tower and the ground level has the porcelain tiles, which actually we makes the limestone look on the building, but we chose tiles because it gives us a larger format than a cast stone or so. And then obviously you have the metal panels at the top floor, which reduces the mass of the building. And then traditional glass curtain wall and the glass windows. And we are using the glass which has, which is basically not a reflective glass, but with a low E coating and, and, and clear, on a clear glass, basically. So the next rendering, which you see is the exact same thing, but now the trees are grown fully. So it gives you the perspective of what will be seen and what will not be seen while you're driving on Emmett Street when the trees are fully grown. You literally cover most of the mass of the building by the way the landscaping is done around the building. The next slide shows the view coming from the other side of the, on the Emmett Street, going toward Ivy Road. And again, we have, you can see that most of the lower level is not visible. And first rendering shows the trees still not matured. The next one shows how the mature trees will, literally will cover the view of this building. And the last, the next page, on page 17, we are shown the two facades which are not rendered in the renderings, which is the northwest facade, which faces the railway track and the southeast facade, which is basically a creek level. And you can see that they both are articulated somewhat in the same manner as the other two facades, you know. There's no blank facade, the most of the lower level on the southeast, sorry, the northwest facade, which is facing the railway track, will not be seen because the railway track is much higher than Emmett Street. We have given the examples of the, what the balcony rail will look like on the terraces as well as the trellis on the seventh floor, the patio, roof deck will look like. They're not exactly what we intend, but they were similar to the examples we have presented here. And after that, we have landscaping, we'll have Jake come back and talk about landscaping.
Yes, so start with the street trees. We're proposing four large American elms, Princeton cultivar. They're large vase shaped trees, about 50 to 70 feet tall. So they will help break down the mass of the building. Under those, we'll have a mix of hardy evergreen grasses and sedges as a structural layer with some accents of tulips and day lilies that will bloom orange in the spring as a nod to VA. Along the south, there's some screen planting, we're replacing some holly trees and another sycamore tree that's going to help get tall and just kind of scale down the mass. Lastly, if I can just have another minute.
Sure.
Would be, you know, you could see in the next two slides, see some of the views of those tree wells. And then the last slide would be the conceptual lighting plan, which we're coordinating with the Emmett Streetscape project to make the street lighting consistent the entire length of the project, so that lighting will be figured out as part of that project. We're going to include a lot of recessed soffit lighting to highlight key entrances, outdoor spaces that will kind of wash down onto the paving. There's also a row of low path lights along the south side of the building that draws you back and activates that side. And then lastly, in the mechanical yard, we're going to have wall mounted, wall packs that we're going to wash and ensure that's a visible space. I think that's it for us. If you have questions, we're happy to answer. Thanks.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Sure.
So for the cafe, I know we had said we wanted to activate the street level and I'm just curious, it looks like the trees are going to block the terrace above the cafe. I guess the additional seating, was that intentional?
Are you talking about above the cafe?
Mm-hmm. So, yeah.
It will for now, but if you look at that next one, it kind of grows above.
Oh, yeah.
See, that's the, the next one shows how they're, as they grow.
Yeah, they're an upright kind of vase shaped tree.
So that was my question. I'm not so much, I guess, I was under the impression from the presentation that the additional seating above the cafe was to help to activate the street level, but if the trees are going to block it, is that necessarily activating it?
We have some.
Right, but I was just wondering, was that intentional? Because as the trees grow, you're not going to be able to really see the activation on that terrace because it's going to be blocked.
I think you'll still see it through the branches, especially this time of year. They're deciduous trees, so it's not going to be fully leafed out all year. But yeah, it's not a complete hedge wall. You know, it's an open canopy and it's kind of vase shaped. So yeah, it will definitely, you know, it'll add a layer to that space if you're looking at it from across the street, but when you're down below it, you still see people above because it's only the first floor. And those trees will get 50 to 70 feet taller, which will be much higher than.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question that I hadn't really seen, it's mostly for staff. In terms of lighting, the optics of them fully, if every, if every room in the hotel is full at night and every light is on in the hotel at night, is there a lighting ordinance?
No.
There is not?
No.
So is that the glazing, does the glazing that you're using mitigate some of the?
No. I, I mean, I've never, I mean, the only time we've had any discussions about interior lighting have been on the BAR and that's with the ATM lobbies. These, so there's no issue.
Part of what we're supposed to do is, does it, does it fit into the? Downtown, some buildings, when they're lit at night are just, they jump right out at you and others do not.
Yeah, there's no, there's no criteria in that and I, and I just, I'm sorry, and you're, so the street level activation, yeah, we were really talking about what's going on at the street level. I didn't mean to be confusing, but no, there's no, and in fact, that's something to add to your notes when we get to the guideline discussion.
Perhaps that's something that staff could, could make evaluations on and I think other municipalities probably that deal with taller buildings more often. It's, it's the illumine, it's the nighttime illumination of the skyline.
Yeah.
And certainly downtown, we have some older buildings with smaller windows that are, they might even be stairwells that are very bright.
So I'm going to ask you to hold this thought because that is the next thing on our agenda. That you can add to it. It is not part of this particular at this time, but hold that thought because then we are going to get to that. For this application, with the guidelines we have today, any further questions?
Do we have questions for both the applicant and Jeff or just the applicant right now?
We can, whatever.
So recommendation number five, metering and or electrical service equipment for the proposed street lamps and for the hotel's occupants will be fully concealed? What is for the hotel's occupants?
This is, the best example I can give is, is the complaint we got down on Park Street, where they just rehabbed the apartment. where they just rehabbed the apartment next to the Smiths'. I got a photograph of like every meter for now, not, you know, not that there'll be multiple meters, but sort of using that as a generic condition and we can shape it with discussion, however, but however, wherever their electrical service is and the metering is, that that's not, and also same thing with the streets that will be, you know, have a meter for their service, street lights and whatever's going on, that it be screened and be screened and be designed in a location within the building or on the building and such that it can be screened. So maybe that's, I suspect Neil knows exactly what I'm meaning by maybe help articulate that, but the condition being that when you're done, I, Jeff, don't send Jeff any photographs of electrical meters on the outside of the building. And so how I re, I could phrase that, but I think that the condition, as I've outlined it, and forgive my parenthetical in there, but I'm just trying to also distinguish between that metering for street lights and any metering for the use of the hotels, sort of putting it all together. How's that for a legal explanation? All right.
And does that make sense for you guys to have a screen on every street light?
No, no, not at.
Or each one doesn't have its own meter? I got you, okay.
This came up during Tarleton Oak, where there, the street lamps will, the city will put them in and they'll, so there'll be a separate service for those. And so that's kind of how I said, all right, not just for those, but also for the uses of facilities being built.
I see. I'll have to pop over there and see what's so offensive about these meters. And then the first condition is requiring exterior lighting to be dimmable, which is not so bad unless you're using LEDs, which I'm assuming is probably the plan since everyone does that now and because we're specifying a color temperature. So that can conceivably add, at least I know when I buy home, LEDs can easily double the cost to make them dimmable, but we're not also saying that they need to be dimmed at any point. So what's the motivator behind that requirement? Are there times where we would dim them?
Yeah, and this is again, the, you know, getting into the issue of light pollution and it's, yeah, it can be subjective, but there's times, for example, you know, the other thing I get a lot of calls about, take for example, the, there's a bank down, Farmers' and Merchants Bank, I believe, and they put in some LED lighting on an exterior ATM lobby, and that, the light blasts out of there, and, you know, you can make them dimmable. We've had a lot of discussions on the BAR about this. Tim Moore is particularly zeroed in on lighting specifications. And so what we've suggested in the conditions is that, yes, it's, you reduce it to that color temperature, but that it is also dimmable such that if it becomes problematic, it can be addressed. Thing happened with, on West Main, and I keep forgetting which, that, the flats.
The standard.
The standard, where the lights were approved and they put those things in, it just.
Now they're just super bright.
Yeah, so the solution was there, was they pulled the light bulbs out, so, but if they had, you know, put something in that had been dimmable, that they could then ratchet it down. And I know it can be done. Look at the, you know, on the street lights we're looking at for Belmont Bridge, we'll have, this could be a master knob somewhere in City Hall that can turn it down. So it's, it's not beyond the realm of technology.
Any discussion?
Yes. So I'd like to, I'd like to begin by reminding us of the guidance that Jody and Bill and I gave at the last time we reviewed this. And to that end, I'll remind, I'll kind of walk us through something that Jeff is going to remind us about a little later on today. And Jeff is going to tell us that the EC regulations found in the zoning ordinance, which are in April 5, Virginia Code, are intended to ensure that developments along the EC routes are compatible with other developments along the EC routes. And they are also compatible with the historic structures that they lead to. I do like this design. I like the design a lot. I voted for the initial design that you all supported. But the guidance that Jody and Bill gave you last time is that the color scheme was incompatible with that entrance corridor, and it's incompatible with the structures that that route would lead to. So the color scheme still gives me a little heartburn.
So you took the words right out of my mouth. To build upon that, I, you stand at the intersection of Emmett and Ivy, and you look up the hill towards University, starting on the left, the Culberth Parking Garage, the Drama School, the Architecture School, Alderman Library, Memorial Gymnasium, the International Residence Hall. Every one of them's brick. The hotel that was torn down that Jeff refers to, it was brick too, and with light trim. And I will read the guidelines that we are charged to uphold as the Entrance Corridor Committee. Designed for a corridor vision, new building design should be compatible and massing scale materials, colors with those structures that contribute to the overall character and quality of the corridor. Preserve history, encourage new contemporary design that integrates well with existing historic buildings to enhance the overall character and quality of the corridor. Maintain the human scale in buildings and spaces. Consider the building's scale as it will be experienced by the people who will pass by, live, work, or shop there. I could not disagree more with staff's analysis of this proposal as it complies with our Entrance Corridor Guidelines.
I couldn't disagree more with that statement. I think this is a welcome, new, modern look along that corridor. I understand the red brick. I get it, but this is not a UVA property. I understand we have to, the Entrance Corridor Guidelines, but as stated, there's nothing here, and what was there was a tan, something tan and, I don't know, but, I think this, right, was it tan brick?
Green?
Tan and green, yeah. And then the, you know, what's still there along the east side of Emmett Street going north, that's not red brick either. So I think this is a welcoming, modern design that may fit in with whatever's going to happen there next. And it wouldn't surprise me that we don't, I don't know, but I just.
I can't imagine that UVA is going to build something that complements that color scheme when they start building across the street.
I, we don't know, and we won't look at it, and we won't get a chance to come up, comment on it. We don't know. But I think the way they've, I think that what they've done with taking down the massing and I think with, and that's my opinion, but a lot of this is, you know, these EC guidelines are opinion-based.
There is absolutely nothing wrong with the design. The design is wonderful. It's just the color scheme that.
In my opinion, I can't stand red brick. I think it's awful. Praise Mr. Jefferson, but that's what's here, but I still think this is a great, welcoming, new look to modernize the street and give it some character. But that's my opinion. And we all have opinions. That's why we have an EC board.
Is it possible to get the applicant to talk about these color schemes, what's driving
Sure.
I guess we certainly were not designing for UVA, so we didn't want to design for UVA's red brick building. We wanted to use, obviously, the contemporary trend, which is all over the town. The new, your Draftsmen Hotel, Graduate Hotel, the new even Hyatt House, going on the Stonefield, the entire Stonefield development, even the country inn which you had done for Charlottesville, it's all contemporary design. Nobody's building red brick hotels anymore. If we were forced to design in red brick, we obviously won't have a choice to do so, but there's nothing in the guidelines that told us that you have to have a red brick building. So we, our attempt was to interpret the traditional materials into the contemporary trend of design and hospitality industry, and particularly in Charlottesville. So you can drive down your new buildings coming up in Charlottesville, none of them are red brick buildings.
I mean, I'll follow along with that. If you look at the new hotel at Monticello and, I mean, Ridge Street, that's gray. There's no red brick on that. The Draftsmen, we've got all the metal and.
Is it an entrance corridor?
The Draftsmen is.
I don't think so.
Man, is that an entrance corridor leading into the University of Virginia?
It's a, it starts, it's.
Well, it's, it's into the city.
The country inn, the design board, it comes corridor.
Yeah, I mean, if you really want to take it to the level of compatibility, I mean, UVA Chapel's a Gothic building that's made of stone, so there is, you know, not architectural homogeneity at the lawn. But I, you know, the question is both for this and for the next discussion is to what extent beyond the entrance corridor are we, you know, going with compatibility? And, you know, is it down to men's gym? Is it down to the parking garage? Is it alumni hall? Is it John Paul Jones Arena to the north? Is it the Lambeth Field dorms? So it, not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to open up the, the scope of what's there and, you know, what's available to look at and compare things to. And ultimately, you know, as far as the criteria goes, it's fairly open, you know, as far as massing, articulation, things, colors. Ultimately, it is your decision, but I do think that the corridor's got a lot more going on in it, and my instructions in the guidelines are relative to that corridor. So just to explain, you know, the basis for my analysis, that's where it stands. As I said, we can go all the way up to the shopping center, you can go up to Seminole Square Shopping Center is a, is in with this, within this entrance corridor. So how far you wish to go, it's up to you.
I just wanted to make one comment, and me personally, I don't know if the red brick is going to like be the deciding factor for me, or if the way it stands is fine, but the Fairfield Inn and Suites Marriott that was just constructed on Cherry Avenue does have red brick. I just wanted to put that out there.
But on Main Street going into the university, you've got the Draftsmen with orange and dark gray, which is a great-looking design building. You've got that new thing on Ninth Street, one of those, one of those, and it's got yellow panels.
I just wanted to make sure we were stating facts. We had said that that didn't have bricks, and it does.
Right.
I think Lisa was talking about the Home Two up at Monticello.
The Home Two up by ACAC.
Oh, okay.
It's light gray and dark gray. I don't understand, yeah.
I don't think, for me, the brick does, is not a, is not like a make or break. I do feel like their original design that had the red brick in it, where the black is now, was nice, but I don't feel like we should be hung up over red brick.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think, I think I might even agree with Jody on the red brick, but I think the design overall really fits and really looks a lot in accord with the new, the new new dorms that they put up, replacing all the old new dorms up the hill. And I think it pretty much fits right in with those. And then, you know, across Cars Hill Field, you have that parking garage, which is sort of brick trimmed on like the tower in the corner, but the vast majority of it is just kind of bare concrete, and it can't really look much worse than a bare concrete parking garage, so.
That's why I think it's a welcoming, open change to see something with some modern design, and, I mean, the tower, I think it looks, the design of that is much better. I know you're not saying about the tower, but I, I think it's a welcoming change.
I think it's definitely much of greater, much greater improvement than what is currently there, well, what was there, so.
Right.
And just to be clear, I'm not, I'm an architect. I love modern design. I love historic design. As I'm sitting here, though, I'm part of the Entrance Corridor Committee.
Right.
And I am charged to look at the guidelines, and the guidelines I read tell me that it needs to be more compatible with the materials that this entrance corridor is part of.
And we have a professional staff that is paid by this city that tells us that this is compatible with what's on that entrance corridor.
And I respectfully disagree with that.
We just have a.
So we have a, we, there's a suggested motion and an alternate motion.
Lisa, I'll just say one thing. I mean, I was kind of waiting until the end, so I think if there's no other comments, can I go?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I wanted to point out, and this is more of as a cautionary for the applicant, because I heard them mention the street trees a lot, and I know that was an important consideration for kind of our discussion of this project. And I just wanted to point out that the street trees, as depicted with the six-foot tree lawn and all that, it differs from what's being presented to us in the Emmett Street Skate Project. And the difference is that the Emmett Street Skate Project would not include that tree lawn, would not include those trees. So there's some conflict there, and, you know, I don't think it's for this Entrance Corridor review to kind of deal with, but I just wanted to set it out there because it's not something I'd heard in public before, but I did want to mention it. If you look at the two plans for those two projects, and I don't know if we have time, you know, I'm not saying we need to look at it right now, but I just wanted to let the applicant know that, that there may be down the road some issues there as the city progresses with that design of the Street Skate Project.
Was that looked at, staff, was that looked at for compatibility?
What we, what we know is Veepel, who owns this site, is on that committee and has expressed repeatedly that they want to coordinate with the Street Skate Project. So I wish he were here. He's probably far better to address that than I. In my conversations with him, and I'm not speaking for him, I'd have to believe that that's what he's hoping to do, is incorporate all of these things into one, but that was my consideration in his language of, I'm on this committee. In fact, I think it's even in the staff report where he has stated that he wants to, you know, work with the city in incorporating and implementing that plan. So I imagine that's something that could be simply stated as another condition. I think, you know, the timing of that, I'd let Neil and Veepel address, but I would say this, the last thing they're going to be doing on that site is planting the new trees, so it's probably time to resolve that.
So just a point of clarification, the adding of conditions, what do you do after we endorse your?
No, we have a motion. That needs to be.
It has to be in the motion?
Right.
If you want to add it.
Yeah, and that's fairly typical on the design issues is to, to, you know, the motion and, you know, and it's possible you also could say, nah, we don't like these conditions, or you could add additional. Those are just the recommendations.
Okay, because when we were talking about lighting, I thought we said that was something we do.
My, the guidelines don't speak to internal lighting. That's what I, so, but if you've got.
You brought up what I, what my real concern is, and that is the light pollution, okay? Is now the time that we have to be put in there to address something?
No, we don't have guidelines. Our guidelines, or can it, does it allow us to add that even though it's not in our guidelines?
And.
Because that was, that's, I was getting to that, and you brought up the light pollution.
Yeah, I think.
Is that a part of your recommendation, that it's adequate and or been considered?
Well, there's, there's nothing really. Well, there's, there's nothing really to address with that for the guidelines. I was saying, when we get to, in the future, discussing the EC guidelines and any revisions to them, I think that's an excellent point to be raised.
Especially with a building of this, this height.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and as I said, lighting is, is one of the things that continues to crop up. However, as far as, I, I don't think the city even regulates interior lights.
Right, we don't now, we haven't had too many really big buildings, but what's, if this is, when you look 20 years from now, we might have more, and we really should, internal lights affect light pollution.
Yeah, I'll say it, yeah.
But in your recommendation, there's nothing in what...
In my reading of our guidelines and my understanding, and this also came up with...
And it's in compliance with our...
Yeah, it also came up with Dairy Central, with that, and that was with the BAR, with that large glass cube. What's going on inside is going on inside.
From the architect, I, I mean, is that something that is best practices right now in terms of designing buildings and the, the light pollution from internal lights to the outside? And do you think it's something that...
We haven't been asked that question, but typically in a hotel room, you probably have less light coming out than the office building, you know? The office buildings don't have all the blinds on, whereas in hotel, most of the rooms will have the curtains drawn. When I go and stay at a hotel, my wife won't allow me to open that curtain.
Unless they don't. So in an office building, the lights are usually off at night. And, and I, my question was, best case for you, every room is full every night.
But you, you will never have everybody's lights on, and if you ever go into the hotel room, the lighting's are much dim than any other building usage that you will come across. So we don't really think that that's a concern for light pollution on a hotel project, I mean, internal lights to the outside.
Well, I, I differ, I, I think it, it does change things, especially as you add more and more tall buildings.
It, it's possible.
It, it outlines the building very definitively. So I, and this may not be, so that's why I asked you as an architect if that's part of your best practices. Maybe it ought to be something that we look into as a city when we continue to grow and go up. What does that, right?
To number three.
And that is something that, if we get to it tonight, we're gonna...
I can jump in about the street trees before we go too far.
Sure.
I had seen earlier plans from the Emmett Streetscape when they were deciding which side of the road to put that mixed-use path on. I haven't seen what you're referring to, you know, we obviously don't want to get in the way of something that's happening, we want to plug right into the Emmett Streetscape Project, so we're happy to, you know, work with that design as it evolves, but yeah, we would love to see that if it's to a point where it's kind of fixed. But yeah, that's, appreciate you bringing that up.
And is there any possibility that you would go with non LED lighting if it would, if it had to be dimmable? Or would it be LED either way?
It's a good question, I'm not an electrical engineer, but I think technology's come quite a ways, I think LEDs can be dimmable, from my understanding, and I know you can adjust the color to make it the, you know, six thou, or three thousand, but yeah, I think whatever, whatever works, we will go with, but I think obviously the efficiency and environmental friendliness of LEDs kind of is the norm now with lighting design, as far as I know. Yeah, are you talking about interior or exterior, just to be clear?
Exterior, yeah.
Exterior, gotcha. Yeah, I know a lot of, like especially big campuses and things, they'll dim them at a certain number of percent at night, especially in parking lots and the, things that aren't being used.
Okay, so there's, there's no risk that you'll go with a halogen lamp, for example, so it will be dimmable if we, if we mandate that? You'll just bring for the more expensive LEDs?
Yeah, I think if, if that's a condition that you want to put in there, that's your choice, but I think, you know, generally LED is kind of where we're headed, but yeah, we haven't got into the details of that yet, it's, you know, we have the conceptual plan that we'll, we'll engage a, a electrical engineer to fine tune that, whatever that material and system is.
Yeah, and Jody, you can, can answer, speak to this too. I think just about every BAR approval that's had lights has had those exact words at it as a condition, and no one has, has, has raised any questions about it, so it seems pretty...
Do you know if they've all used LEDs?
What's that?
Do you know if they've all used LEDs when they put them in?
LED seems to be state of the art, and, and like I said, the, the lights that we looked at for Belmont Bridge are LED and dimmable, yeah, it seems to be, that's where it's going. I, you know, and I guess, and also to the Streetscape thing, you know, this is one of these places where, what is the streetlight that's being selected? Is it the UVA light, is it something coming in? And so I, I very much think it would be appropriate to, to, to be specific about what things you'd like considered and, and having a condition in that regard relative to the Streetscape Project. But I, I don't know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm just saying that we've had a lot of discussions on the BAR and this, this language about the, the dimmable and LED, it, it has not created any problems, no. And there's also, remember, there's, there are, this is almost to some extent being redundant with the city's regs, I mean, we have dark sky rules, we have rules about the lights, but it's sort of like throwing in this dimmable piece adds, when someone says, well, I put in the light, you know, like, well, ratchet it down a little bit, so it, it gives flexibility. But, you know, to not have it in a condition doesn't mean that the, suddenly the, the city's regs and light, exterior lighting don't apply.
I feel that we are going down a rabbit hole because nobody wants to make a motion, so we can, again, make this meeting that should not last as long, make, go till, well, in the morning, or we've got a set of guidelines which we may or may not all agree with, and we have a recommendation.
I'll make a motion, but I suspect the motion won't carry, so...
I'd like to make a motion.
So you better make a motion.
Make a motion that'll carry, will you?
Can I ask just one more question?
Sure.
And this is of the applicant, so would it be impossible, and not saying that I'm going either way, I'm just asking so we have all of the information available, with the new design, instead of it being, is that, is, instead of it being black in the center, could it be red brick or be red? Just to do a happy compromise?
You make it red, you get five, six bucks.
Not saying that it has to, I'm just wondering, could that be an option? Because I think that's what we're hung up, that's where we're hung up.
One good thing about architecture professionals, the infinite amount of options available to us, but we need to make it finite, so there are only probably few bricks available in this range. We have used this brick on other buildings, actually it's on Graduate Hotel, and I, I don't think that if you say, make a gray building, we may not find the brick which looks gray.
No, I would, what I was saying was right here, because in the original design, this was red brick.
That's correct, no, no, I understand.
So I was just wondering.
What I'm saying is in this particular design, contemporary design, we picked a brick which is, we know is available, and it fits into the contemporary guideline.
Okay.
So that's why we chose that brick, not that, that's the only option we have.
Okay, thank you.
Can we issue them a COA that allows them to switch to red if they want?
If they want it, red, they would have presented red.
Or would they have to come back?
I would already have presented it to them if they wanted it.
That's fair.
We wouldn't be done by now.
Maybe they'll have a change of heart, goes to Thomas Jefferson will visit them.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Having considered the standards set forth in the city code, including the city entrance corridor design guidelines, I move to find the proposed design for the Gallery Court Hotel at 140 Emmett Street satisfies the ERB's criteria, is consistent with the guidelines, and is compatible with the goals of this entrance corridor, and that the ERB approves the certificate of appropriateness application with, as submitted with the following conditions. Number one, lamping for exterior lighting to be dimmable, or subject to replacement one time on direction of city planning staff, and not exceed a color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin. Two, mortar color should be reviewed by staff. Three, signage requires separate permits and approvals by zoning, all internally illuminated signage shall, shall appear to be lit white at night. Four, rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened within the appurtenance. Five, metering and/or electrical service, service equipment for the proposed street lamps to be installed in the public right of way, and for the hotel's occupants will be fully concealed or located so as to allow full screening.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Um, what made you add the second part to part one?
So going off lighting my own house LEDs, if they're dimmable and they're twice as expensive, and the odds that someone complains like they did at the standard are under 50%, then it makes more sense financially speaking, and possibly even ecologically speaking, because you can reuse the other LEDs, to just take the risk of having to swap out all the LEDs, if people don't like them, with a dimmer one.
Is that part of our review?
You just said it.
I guess so. All right.
I mean, if it's not allowed, I can...
Well, I don't know that we should, are in the business of, I mean, if, if this is something that, that, that was a concern, the cost of the applicant, I think, that they'd say, why are we having to do this?
Right.
And I think in the long run, LEDs save money, and they're more efficient.
Oh, no, I, I really want them to be LEDs, yeah.
Okay.
I'm worried that...
By way of discussion, right, we're in discussion right now.
Yes.
I think the applicant and the architect need to hear that one of the concerns of the planning commission as we move forward as a city has to do with the new technology of lighting and what it does to our perception of our city.
So then why would we give them the option?
Because we don't, the technology's changing.
It doesn't sound like there's any need to dim them on demand, it's like, if they get complaints, they just want to lower...
Right.
...brightness overall, which is like a one-time change. It doesn't really require, you know, a dimmer switch, so you're putting a bunch of money into the more expensive LEDs.
The word dimmer is more confining than just switching out.
Yeah.
A dimmer is a...
I really need to recommend that you go back to the provisions of your guidelines.
Yes, of course.
And if you don't have standards in your guidelines for, you know, talking about this, you can't, you, you have, your decision has to be based on the guidelines, so if you can...
And staff said there aren't any provisions.
That's right, that's right.
Well, that's just for interior lighting, there's a whole chapter on Streetscape lighting.
Right, so, I, I guess my issue is, we're sitting here having a conversation about dim, dimmable lights, and the applicant has no problem with putting the dimmable lights in. So why are we making this extra when it doesn't need to be?
I got the impression they didn't want it at all, preferably.
But are the dimmable lights on the inside?
No.
No, on the outside.
Exterior lighting. Staff approved recommendations of, proposal, of, conditions of approval, lamping for exterior lighting to be dimmable and not exceed, but you added a second part.
To switch out of another light if needed to be, or, I don't know.
In the alternative to making it dimble, but they could just opt to make them dimble if they want that option.
Right.
And I'll just say, it's, 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 I understand what staff's doing with the recommendation, but it, you know, we just need to make sure everything's very close to the guidelines.
Let me bring this down to a very, very enforceable level. I assure you that no one is going in that hotel and checking every lamp to make sure that that lamp, when I mean a lamp, the bulb, is dimmable. It would only be in the instance that there was a complaint. Do you go and check all the lamps? Are you going to go look at every lamp? Are you going to go on a complaint basis?
I try not to complain about much, but we are, just to be clear, we're talking about the, the lighting that is shown on their site plan, so it's predominantly site.
Are you going to go and climb a ladder and check every lamp to make sure it says dimmable on it?
What I'm learning, no, I, I, I...
He wouldn't.
That's what I'm telling you.
Somebody from zoning.
If it was a complaint.
Right.
But on a, on, to get a CO, we're not going to climb, I promise you, I promise you, I've done this for too long. It, it's in the condition, you all know it's in the condition, it'll be whatever it is, unless there's a complaint.
Yeah, the first thing I would say about LED lights is, don't think about light bulbs, they don't exist in that terms. It doesn't even look anything like a light bulb, it looks, I don't even know how to describe it.
All right.
So it is a, and it is a, a function of that they are dimmable.
Right.
And this hasn't, I, I, I apologize that this has, you know, become maybe more complex than it should be, but I, we've had no issues with using this, and, and from architects who deal with a lot of lighting design, this has been, they're quite comfortable with this. So, and it fits within the guidelines in talking about, you know, how do we, you know, take care of glare and things like that on those exterior lighting, but we really are talking about lights that are sort of down here in these bollards, entry lamps at the entrance, some of the, the low lighting along the patio area. These aren't big lights up on the top of the hotel. But I would be comfortable, I mean, if you just, if you did, you struck that, I think we would be fine.
I'd like to amend my motion to change, condition one to lights must be warmer than 3,000 Kelvin, or as warm more, warmer.
Warmer than 3,000?
Less than.
Less than. Not exceed a color temperature of 3,000 K. Because the more, the higher the K, the more like daylight looking they are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're, you are requesting, is, okay, first off, let's, is everyone in agreement for an amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any want to oppose to an amendment?
To the motion, no.
To an amendment.
Of the motion?
To the motion, right.
No.
So you would like to make an amendment to the motion saying, condition number one, lamping for exterior lighting not to exceed color temperature of 3,000 K, right?
Yep.
Are you agreeable to that?
I like it the way it is.
So no, you're not agreeable to that?
No. I mean, I'm not going to keep us here to nine o'clock for that.
But you are.
I'm not, but I just feel like, why are we making it more difficult than it needs to be?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, since this is industry standard, I don't know.
Right.
Um, if what we do in a...
But it's, it's not industry standard to make them dimble.
Everything out there is becoming dimmable now.
I just feel like if we're going to sit up there and have a conversation about contemporary and brick, why are we, why are we tripping off LED lighting?
Which means they're harder to make.
Okay.
But it's okay, I, I can live with that.
Fine, fine. What, so you accept the motion, or what do we do when we don't accept the second to the motion?
You still have the current motion on the table.
So we have the current...
So there was an amendment...
Not seconding.
You're withdrawing that part of your amendment.
Okay, I thought we voted on it.
We voted to, to see if we wanted to have one, she did not second, she is not agreeing, she's the seconder, and did not agree to the second of your motion.
Gotcha.
Or the amendment, right?
Correct, amendment of his original motion.
The amendment of his original motion was not seconded, that was to the seconder, second, the person who...
The, the initial motion stands.
So the initial motion stands, that's what I'm asking?
Correct, with the second.
With the second that we do have?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you all have more discussion or call roll?
Can we just change it so we can all agree? It's like just getting call roll.
That ain't gonna happen.
I thought I heard the maker of the motion requested to withdraw part of his motion, that's what I heard.
No, he, he requested to amend it, but then he also added some extra in it, instead of, I thought he was going to amend it back to how it was, and if we could amend it back to how it stated, then I think we'd all be happy.
You mean in the packet, or with the dimble?
With the dimble, however stated.
Exactly.
Number one.
But right now it stands as lamping for exterior lighting to be dimble or...
Or subject to one change out.
To one change out, and not to exceed a color temperature of 3,000 K. I think one of our work session needs to be talking about how to make conditions that are enforceable, because I don't know that that is ever enforceable about how to, to do a one change out situation.
When you could just put a dimmer in it and not have to change in period.
So I hear you, though, I just feel like we are...
I think ideally in the future, this would be specifying a lumen value so that, because it doesn't have to be changed on demand, it would just be no brighter than this, but we can't do that for this one, obviously.
Well, and so I think that as a, if we can get through this, there is a second part of our ERB that talks about changing guidelines. It is a small, three-page thing that I'm quite certain we can get through tonight, I feel it, and I think that is the place for us to talk about lighting. I, listen, lighting is a huge thing, I'm totally on board, it is one of the hardest things, but I want us to stick with the guidelines we have, so you have something to add?
I was just going to say, you know, lumens, light temperature, color temperature, just like... just like glass, uh, there are so many rules and terms and measures and diagnostics that are applied. And so, um, uh, I didn't use lumens intentionally, uh, and, and so, um, just wanted to offer, but it is, uh, this is not unusual to what we've used. I would leave it as is or, or remove it if you wish and not add more technical terms that, uh, that, that change the definition of things.
And as we go through the next discussion.
And we can remotion.
So, hang on one second. From a person who does light meter tests and have for a very long time, and there is a, the, the, the county has a, a, a very robust lighting, uh, uh, ordinance. When it comes to LED, it truly is about the K factor, about the brightness as opposed to those lumens. So, right now, that ordinance in the county is based off of lumens and we're having a really hard time with glare. Not necessarily glare as much as it is really impede, the, 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 that, that, was it Kelvin? Is it K? Is it Kelvin?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's really making a difference because there's not a lumen measurement for LED. So, I would, I, I would challenge us to look at those things in, in both directions. What we have is a motion. Uh, you've got an amendment that did not go through the second. So, the motion stands as it was initially presented, um, where it says exterior lighting to be.
So, if you guys want it to be as the text, someone could just make an amendment to change it to the text.
You gotta make that amendment because you made the motion, right?
Right. Yeah.
You made the motion.
You made the motion. You're the only one to, yeah. You can ask for a friendly amendment. Do you want to ask for a friendly amendment?
So moved.
Can we have a friendly amendment to change it back to as stated in number one?
Sure.
I'd like to say that, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, uh, that includes the staff recommendations of approval to this proposal as listed in the staff report with an amendment. What are we doing? Point of order? Do I need to, you have a brow, fur, a brow?
So, to be technically correct.
Thank you.
You had a motion that was seconded.
Correct.
Um, if you want to change it, you, the proposed friendly amendment, which was seconded, should be voted on and then you go back to the motion as amended.
Okay, so we vote on the friendly amendment to change it back to?
Correct.
By voice acclamation or do I have to call roll?
That's fine. Voice acclamation.
By voice acclamation, do we approve the friendly amendment to go back to the original five things on this page, the staff recommendations?
Yes.
All in favor?
Um, aye.
No?
You might want to do a hand.
Okay, let's do a hand. All in favor? Okay. Opposed? Um, motion passes to make the amendment. Now, we still have the motion on the table for.
Approval.
I think it's approval. I don't even remember at this point. Approval with the stacker recommend, recommendations as listed on this page. Ms. Creasy, will you call roll?
Mr. LaHondra?
Boy, it's taken a long time to vote no. And it's no to all of them.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolzberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. Motion passes four-two. Four-to-two. Thank you for your patience while we make sausage. So, the last item on our agenda is to review the entrance corridor design guidelines. Um, I'm gonna make a recommendation that this not come on an agenda, that we have a work session about this before this is kind of almost sprung on us at the very.
So, so the, the intent of bringing this forward to you all at this point is to make you aware that, um, this is something that needs to be, uh, included in a future work plan.
Okay.
Uh, we know there's lots of things pending at multiple times. This provides some background as to how one would, um, could potentially move forward with such a process. The, uh, BAR currently is working on a guideline update process, um, of their own right now. And so, some of this mirrors that, what they're working through at this point in time. Um, this is not for action at this moment. It's more information. Sorry, you were talking, so I just jumped in, but I'll, I'll turn over.
I don't need to talk anymore.
Um, but yeah, this was just to, to, to provide, uh, needed background on something that needs to be on the forefront at some point in the future.
When we do talk about this, would that be the appropriate time to talk about moving this to the BAR as well?
That was gonna be my first question, too. Explain the difference between this and the BAR.
That's, uh, that would be a question for, I think, uh, county staff above me.
The city can identify an entrance corridor review board that's, it could create a separate one that's separately appointed. It can be you. Um, the BAR could be designated. You might want to consult with them. I know they do have very full agendas as it is.
I don't have any need to inform them at all.
Is there an ordinance?
Just like yourself. An ordinance change would be necessary, but.
Council would have to vote in.
Right. So, somehow if that's something you all are interested in teeing up as a discussion, you should engage the members of the BAR and, um, also have discussions through staff with, um, you know, city council as well.
Ben, and I think, you know, we can look at that. Uh, we saw last year, um, very high, um, one of the highest numbers of BAR items, uh, over the course of the year. And, um, with the number of entrance corridor things that you all reviewed, I think it was like four times what any Mary Joy had dealt with. So, you know, while it's not a lo, you know, tremendous amount, it is increasing. We're seeing a lot of activity in the entrance corridor. There's a lot of things that you all don't see that I review administratively. But I would say, um, regardless of where it goes, whether the BAR stays with you, a lot of you have dealt with the entrance corridor discussions for a long time. And so that would be, your input would be.
Two, two.
Okay. I mean, it would just be invaluable because the things that are, there's just an awful lot of, of little things that, you know, like you said, we just haven't thought of. And technology is racing ahead of us. Uh, sometimes, you know, surprisingly stating the obvious gets missed. So, your input would be helpful, um, regardless. And I, and I would welcome, you know, if you're sitting at home one night and it's just, you're just itching to tell me what you think of the design guidelines, go ahead and type up an email. I welcome it. It's, um, and, um, but.
I, I don't think it needs to be over the AR. I think it rightfully stays.
I have a question. How many, uh, pro, how many projects overlap and go to both BAR and EC?
Well, we, so far I've only had Tarleton Oak and, um, Dairy Central. But it's something I want to take a harder look at, um, to see where some potential, um, issues are. We also have some, um, some of the maps, like you saw with, uh, Seminole Square, uh, what's on the GIS. They didn't cover the entire parcel. So, th- there's some, some detective work that we need to do to sort of get where are things overlapping? Where do things, where should they go to the BAR? When should go to the EC? Uh, should it be both like we did with Tarleton Oak? Or was that, uh, problematic? But those are, again, things that, yeah, we can, we can have a discussion of and it's, um, um, I, I, you know, Missy and I discussed this and we know that the, the comp plan is, is front and center. And, and certainly what, how the comp plan gets revised will instruct what we may or may not do with, with the guidelines. So, we understand that, that sequencing. I just wanted to get it into your, into your thoughts and, and ask for your help if, if, if you've got thoughts you wanted to share on the guidelines. So.
Is there an action we have to take to this?
No.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would just say, if that were to happen, I'd like for you to come back with suggestions as well. Clearly, you hear lighting from us, interior and exterior. But I'd like for you to come back with suggestions and it not be a, an exercise in us creating guidelines. I, I, tell us what some industry standards are and let us comment on those.
Best practices.
Number one, right. Number one. Number two, I really want to know what, because in this day and age, when we are working on trying to be more business-friendly and create economic development and provide opportunities for people, I don't want to make it harder so that people have to come to two different governing bodies to get something done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly where, you know, I go back to my interview, uh, a year and a month ago, and that was one of the questions. Uh, how do I see, you know, design review and historic preservation and economic development? And, you know, as we have with this hotel, these folks want to get going. And, um, um, you know, so it, it, it is something that, I, I think one thing I, I wish, and I only come to you guys occasionally, and it's not like the BAR where, where we, we're, you know, together an entire evening and we all kind of know each other's personalities. You all I really am not familiar with and I'll admit that. And there are times I'm not sure how exactly to reach out to you when I have some questions. So, that would be something that, um, I hope you all don't mind when I, when I, you know, reach out and, or if hopefully that's welcome, say, hey, how would you, what do you guys think of this? Because I do that with the BAR all the time. Just float something out there. What do you guys think? And they'll come back and say, ah, that looks good, do this, or, no, Jeff, that needs to come up.
Is that an over email situation?
Um, and that's where, you know, that'd be, that's how we treat it. We don't take any votes. We don't approve or disapprove. But I just, I solicit feedback and it's helpful.
How does that work for transparency in the process?
Well, you are allowed in FOIA to, um, take a poll and, and take individual members' um, uh, opinions on specific items.
Okay, okay.
You know, for example, the, the, the thing with, um, tonight with, uh, the ready kits. Uh, there was a bit of a snafu with their drawings, got submitted for a building permit. And then when it was brought to me, went, no, 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 this is so different. Um, in some ways I could have possibly floated out, say, what do you, you all, you know, have a sense of this? Do you want to, um, this look like something we want to bring before you all? Um, those are the kind of things that, as I said, it's just about having a relationship. I, I, I told Bruce, uh, Wordell, tonight, you know, in another year, I'll, I'll, I'll be answering questions differently. But, but it is where I say, it's just, it's the familiarity with all of us working together. And on these, yeah, this, this is about someone's building and hotel that they want to get going on and, um, our, our working relationship is something to work on.
Is this something?
You gotta come to more meetings.
What's that?
You gotta come to more.
No, no. I have another quick question. Is this something that, um, that is more appropriate? Say, I know that our work sessions have been overwhelmed with other things, but is this something, say, last week or last month, instead of putting it on a regular agenda item, is this something that can be added to as a, you know, a thirty-minute discussion on the work session day? So that there's not a meeting and then?
It would have to be deemed a special meeting in order to.
So, ERB, that, that can't be a work session?
Well, you all can have work sessions on whatever you want to. Um, there's also, I mean, unless it's not your preference, this kind of discussion is fine. Um, but you can, you can put it on a, a regular work session agenda. You can establish a special meeting that would be a work session. You can, you can do all sorts of things.
Well, so the schedule is like month one brainstorming session, month three staff proposes, month five review. Is this the brainstorming session or would that work session be the brainstorming session?
I'm talking about, for instance, the Gallery Court Hotel came before us in January, but it was on the irregular agenda. So, we went through this whole process. I mean, I think, and, and tell me if I'm just crazy and wrong, but when we have projects that are gonna come to us, if they come to a work session and we have that time to go back and forth in a more informal setting and, and chat in our work sessions, don't you think those turn out better and flow better at the meeting?
Look at, uh, East High Street last summer.
That's exact, that's what I'm talking about. So, is this not?
That case, it was more timing.
Yeah.
Right. Is this not more appropriate to do something like that where they want to just get some feedback to do a work session?
It goes back to if, when they submitted last November, it was the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And I got the drawings. I went into the miss seat and went, uh, because we had prepared for it to be on the meeting agenda and everything. We're like, and that's when I said, all right, I reached out to some of you and, and, and the response was, you know, I thought if I could just sit down, have the applicant, you know, even if we did two, two at a time and just float what they were thinking, because it was such a significant change. And, um, that didn't really pan out. And, and I, and I respect that. I think, you know, most of you replied, you know, that doesn't, it's not transparent. Um, so we kind of bumped everything to, you know, my point to them was, because what they had come in with in December was something that was above the garage was C-shaped. And I said, that's not gonna fly. That's not what was reviewed in the special use permit. I said, it's, it's one thing, you know, for that, but then they're, you know, you've now changed the brick to a different color. I said, so, so that's what delayed things then to them coming back in January and having that session where they shows you the three. So, we really, uh, I think i- i- with some informal give and take, we probably could have had this, uh, before you all in December. That's what I'm saying.
But that's what I'm talking about. Instead of rehashing that, what I'm talking about is bringing this to, uh, is there a way to do that with, I have to call a special meeting to say, we're gonna have in just February, I know our work session this week, this month is a, a, a special meeting, but for our work session, this, this first thirty minutes is gonna be dedicated to the back and forth on the, whatever ERB, uh, topic of the day is.
BAR routinely meets with, um, I'll set up meetings where, you know, one or two at a time come in and, and just say.
That's not what I'm talking about. I am not doing that. So, I've made a, for nine years I've done it that way because I do not think it's transparent to the public. And everybody doesn't do it. If you can do that with everybody, then it's the same. But that is not, so you're, you're gonna get a no from me every time. I am speaking about the actual work session that we have scheduled on the fourth Tuesday of every month.
I think that would be invaluable. And, and, you know, the other way to look at it is, what time at night do we finally get to these things where we really are discussing, you know, design issues? It's eleven o'clock at night and, you know, everyone wants to go
And if we're doing it between five and seven, we may actually make some much better decisions about it.
Absolutely. Or everybody will be there to make the decision.
Yeah.
And then we have, we look at some of the things that we've seen before and then we can maybe get it quicker.
Yeah, I, and we're gonna have the same situation with the Seminole Square. I think, um, you've got one building in the entrance corridor property and the other ten on a property that's not. Uh, I think we're gonna need a little more, uh, get, you know, conversation before they bring something forward. So, that's good to know.
Right.
With those work sessions.
I'm gonna highly recommend you put that on a four, fourth Monday work session. That Seminole Square, I think we did, I think that was invaluable to have that conversation with them to, to look at those things. Because from what I understand, they've done some of the things that we talked about. So, uh, if y'all, I mean, that, that's just an observation from, from some of the things, seeing how we kind of work. And, and I think, and please tell me, that we, uh, enjoy that back and forth as a more, as opposed to the kind of more formal as to what we are right here. Okay.
Alright. Thank you.
Yes, no, maybe? I am going to gavel out of the entrance corridor review board and.
Gavel's back.
Adjourn this meeting until February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, where we have a special meeting about South First Street.
Well done.